Because the actions are governed by actions that you take at a regular meeting, one of the policies for the council is to try and attend as many meetings as possible. And defines that at the meeting, the mayor is the providing presiding officer, that if the mayor is not absent, it's the mayor pro tem. And if both are absent, then it would be the remaining council members would select someone for the purpose of that meeting to govern that meeting. Again, members, next we go to page, I guess I'm on 2.4, talking about members of the council. Again, this is just kind of an overall review of the Brown Act, which provides that all your actions has to be taken at a noticed meeting. And so please avoid individual meetings between council members. That's not allowed under the Brown Act because you don't know who's talking to who, you can't have serial meetings. So try and bring all your business to, to the council meetings. And then there's also in this, the general rule that when members of the public come to you or you're addressing matters, try and address the issue, not individual personalities of the council. We've had some issues with that in the past. And so just address the issues before and members of the public address their concerns. And again, as always, remember that there are the conflict of interest rules, so try and be careful of conflict of interest. There is a change in section 2.4.6. This is a request for, by council members for substantive information and or research from the city staff, and I've just inserted here, or the city attorney will be channeled through the city manager. The whole purpose of this is to keep your legal fees down so that each individual council member, you know, can't ask 10, 15 hours of questions. Very rarely happens. There are times when every member of this council has reached out to me for conflict of interest or very, very quick issues, which I can do. But more substantive items, we'd like to go through the city manager. Again, to make certain that we're not doing some substantive research, you know, that would be maybe the rest of the council is not interested in that issue and you're racking up costs and stuff. So again, for, you know, really substantive researcher questions, don't ask staff, don't ask me, but go through the city manager. Questions on that?
Just if, if you're wanting us to, so my business brain says to try to reach out to those who need to be involved from the beginning, so you don't have to keep trying to add people to the loop. Would you prefer that we only send stuff to you directly, Dave? Or would you prefer, if it's a legal question, to send it to you and CC, Scott? So that way you can just say, yes, go ahead, or no, don't? What's the preference there?
I mean, at this point in time, I think the way we've been handling it, which all of you have a good feel for, you know, when to hit the gas, when to hit the brakes on these issues, I have had no problem with it. You know, sometimes you've gone directly to staff. You've asked Matt a question, or you've gone to Public Works. It's worked fine to date. And I think with legal questions, if you could copy me on it, have it go through me to Scott, and Scott and I will generally touch base on those anyway to make sure that we aren't duplicating something that may have already been done, or something that already came to me and I answered before it ever got to Scott. But I think generally, as long as staff is comfortable with the conversations, and they have to this point, if it, I could see a day, and I've seen, I've been in those situations where it's gotten uncomfortable and staff would come and say, you know, can you talk to council person so and so about this?
I have the same thing with Dave. Because I know I'll send like a, check out that crack or something, you know, and send it to Jackie and whatever, that trip and fall thing, and that doesn't seem to be a problem, little things like that.
Okay.
I will tell you that the council for the last couple of terms, they've not really, I would call it abuse the city attorney in terms of asking for, you know, research to be done. There's occasional times where maybe a half hour, so I can quickly look at something and I get back to individual councils. But for major items, that hasn't happened. And if it does, we, we just, we bring it through the city manager. I guess 2.7 is just a reminder that we do encourage council to become members of organizations because that gives you another perspective that is always beneficial. It's also great to have the city out there. People sometimes forget about Avalon. I've been to many, many league presentations where they leave Catalina off the map. And so your presence out there reminds people that we actually do exist. Okay.
Can I ask a question regarding 2.7? I was just going to ask, it's not necessarily part of the policy, but, and it also definitely has to do with the fact that we joined council during pandemic times. But is it possible to have an addendum to this that is outreach list for those groups, executive leader for each of the primary groups for COGS, GAG, CalCities, and then possibly also just for the offices of the legislature that we outreach to? I feel like a lot of that came both after the pandemic because of just the nature of the pandemic when we started, but also it would have been nice to hit the ground running with all that contact information in place, in one, one place.
Yeah, I think what you're asking for is for the, for staff to prepare a list of the various organizations, who the council representatives are on for those organizations, as well as our important contacts for our, the state and federal legislature, kind of like a thing. And then you will be getting a new representative from the league. Just so you know, Christine Guerrero has got a big promotion. So she's, I think, going to be in charge of state policy for the league. And so we're looking for someone to, we are, the royal we, the league is looking for someone to replace her.
She can't be replaced.
I know.
Yeah, she's irreplaceable. Yeah, I just figured that'll help whoever's coming onto council new kind of hit the ground running and not feel like they have to search out that info first, so, yeah.
Okay. Now we're going to section three. Council meetings are here in City Hall. We have regular council meetings, the first and third Tuesday. I've changed that to five. And so, and you can have council workshops from time to time. The next page, we do discuss the non-emergency special council meetings. You have those a lot during the budget presentation. Those are really the same as a general meeting, except that required notice is only 24 hours notice. And then you have emergency meetings. We've not had an emergency meeting since I've been city attorney. I've only had one emergency meeting in my entire career. It's when the plane went down in Cerritos, and they had an emergency council meeting. But that's the kind of thing where you need to meet in an hour, just to talk about local efforts for an emergency. So that's, that's the one example. But you generally do, are able to do things at regular meetings or the occasional special meetings.
So on 3.4.1, or by a majority of the council in accordance with the, with the Brown Act. So how do we, how does that work?
Okay. So one of the weird exceptions to the Brown Act is that you can call, a majority of the council can call a meeting. And so what you would do is you would, again, the mayor can call a meeting, the city manager can, or a majority of the council members can just say, I'd like to call a special meeting for the purpose of X. And not just to discuss what, you know, the substance about that, but if you want to have a special meeting, you can request that that item be the subject of a special meeting, and then we'll just schedule it. The Brown Act does allow us to, to discuss dates, times for meetings, and a general subject matter of what you want to have a meeting about, just not the substantive discussions as to what's going to occur.
I don't think we've ever done that in the history of...
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Scott, can I ask you if, if, for example, we have a regular special, or a regular council meeting on the first and third, but because of a conflict, whether it's election day, whether it's, you know, Thanksgiving sometimes, or we have a number of council people that are off, so council chooses to move it to the second or fourth, does that not make it a regular council meeting if it's?
So, so under the Brown Act, a, a regular meeting is usually set by policy resolutions. So you, so you have your policies. That's what is defined as a regular meeting. For Brown Act purposes, also a regular meeting can be if you move it to like the second or fourth, you, you, you notice it within 72 hours, that's also a regular meeting. But there are certain instances where there are things that have to be done, that can only be done at a regular meeting set via your policy or resolution. And that is usually bond documents. So if you're going to pass a, the city's going to issue bonds, that has to be done at a regular meeting that is pursuant to an already established policy. You cannot have a regular meeting for that. In addition to that, you, for compensation purposes of the city manager, has to be done at a regular meeting. You cannot create a regular meeting on 72 hours for that. So again, when we're talking about compensation, that's out of the whole bell situation, has to be done at a regular meeting. Again, just going through, we don't have adjourned meetings. The, our, our meetings are noticed pursuant to, because we have an internet, they're all notices are required to be posted on the city's internet, and there has to be a direct link to the agenda on the first page of, of the city's landing page. There is for that. And then the important thing is on 3.8.1, we kind of sometimes forget that, the agendas. The city manager sets the agenda in most instances. However, there is an exception that reads, any council member may place an item on a regular meeting, at a regular city council meeting or workshop, by making a written request to the city manager. So if you want something on the agenda, you send an email to Dave, and then that item can be put on an upcoming, at a regular meeting agenda. So feel free to ask.
So, okay, so the agendas usually go out on late Thursday or Friday morning. But let's say I wanted to bring up something, but then it takes research on the part of the staff to put it together. So we can't expect for it to be right on that next little...
It's not reasonable. I mean, I mean, unless it's something that you...
I just want to blab about...
That doesn't, you want to, you want to complain about something. But I guess it is, remember that we want to come to you and have you make decisions that are informed decisions. And so that best way to do that is to give enough notice that we can do the research, bring information to the council, so that, so that, that decision. So there may be some discussions when you ask for something on the agenda, when is the appropriate time for it to be on the agenda, to make certain that, you know, you're not just having an item, and then you have to continue it, or bring it back in a month from now, and then another two months from now, so.
And when we send out that email, is it a request, or it has to be on the agenda if we ask for it?
If you ask for something on the agenda at some point in the future, it has to be on the agenda. There's no, there's no discretion there.
Okay, thank you.
And then just to clarify, if direction, if, if direction is given at a council meeting to have it be added to an agenda?
Yes.
Do you still need a follow-up written request?
I would say not.
Okay.
I would say not. And that's been the practice, is, is, is we, if, if at a, at a council meeting, and you have on the agenda, so that's bringing, we're going to actually, it's going to be council member reports right now, and we're also going to have it be council member reports and requests. So we're going to change that, Devin, to add, it's in the policy manual, I just didn't, but that's the point where you can ask something to be added.
Okay.
And that's also meant under the policy, if you want to go to a conference and be paid for the conference, and, you know, get all your, your, your things, you're very good at saying, I'm going to the league. Some of the things you don't have to ask permission for, if you're the regular member. But if there's a special conference you want to go to, the policy says that you're to request the council for permission to go to that. Those are extraordinary things where you're not really a member of something, but we're going to just, so you'll see that wording change.
So for example, if you go to the school board meeting, and you want to be reimbursed for that, then you just ask...
Right, I would have to confirm that you guys are okay with it. Or a broadband meeting or something that's not part of the regular, yeah.
Yeah, that's the only thing I can really think of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and again, 3.8.2, just remember that even though the council can add, request items on the agenda, members of the public have every right to come and ask that member, that items be put on the agenda. You don't have to do it, but, you know, the public has a right to ask. And if you recall at the last meeting, I think Mr. Feltz came and asked that in the future, we have some discussion on sidewalk ordinance revision. Members of the public can, can definitely ask, but you don't have to put something on the agenda. Again, also in the same paragraph, remember that during the council meetings, you can only take actions on things that are on the agenda, but you can ask questions for clarification, make a brief announcement, or talk about your activities. You can also ask staff to bring back factual information. So if you, like, let's say, I want to know what the traffic counts on Clarissa are, because I'm interested in the future of sometime, maybe putting additional controls there. You can ask for staff to provide information, and then, and that's not an action item, it's just asking staff to provide information for a future decision.
And that's a great one, because previously, somebody would talk about something, and we'd just sit there like this. And that's what the county board of supervisors does. They talk, and then they don't clarify, they don't even act like they acknowledge that you're even up there. So this is, this is good.
Okay, and just more posting information, and then the minutes are prepared by Gabby, and so they're available on, after the council meeting, you may want to make certain that you look at the minutes to make certain, the one that they accurately affect your vote, or any comments that, that you have. Because once they're in the minutes, they, they are the official record, even though we still have the tape, but the minutes are the official record. So you want to make certain that the minutes are there, and especially, you know, 10, 20 years from now, we're not going to have their recordings, we're just going to have the minutes. And so you want to make sure the minutes. And then we outline what the minutes have, and in terms of contents of the minutes and council actions. Okay, meetings. Now we go to 3.10, council meeting conduct. So the meetings again are run by the mayor or, or mayor pro tem. It just sets forth what is on the agenda, and it's, it's really, the purpose of this is for an agenda item, staff makes a presentation, and then the, the best procedure is to have the council ask staff any questions for clarification of the material presented by staff. And then after that, you can have comments among yourselves, but before you act, you have to allow the public. And it's probably best, it's, most cities allow the staff report to be presented, and then questions of the staff by the council before the public, to get as much information out there before the public comes. That's been, that's been your practice, and it's very, very good. So I, you know, there's, there's no change. Okay, let's talk about public, public, public participation, 3.10.4. Remember that all items on the agenda, the public has a right to, to comment on. If it's not on the agenda, they still have a right during the general public comment. Just has to be something within your jurisdiction. And frankly, that's broad enough that any, if the public is smart enough, they can say anything is within your jurisdiction. So we try and advise people not to tell people. It's not, it's not city council business, because a smart person can always bring it.
So 4.2 says three minutes.
Yes, so that's the thing, yeah. The policy as written said five, and some years ago, we changed it to three. And so I'm just reflecting this, we can change that, it's, again, this is a council...
Only because we've been doing two.
Two, or you can do two.
Well, so there's a difference between, or is there a difference between general comments, where the public can talk about anything, limited to two, but when you're talking about a real piece of substance, something on the agenda, limited to three?
You could, you...
I don't know.
You tell me what you want, and I'll write the policy.
What do you think, Michael? What do you think, Yessenya? Council member?
Two and three.
Two and three for the public comment, two, and for agenda items, three?
For three, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, two for general public comment.
How about council member Schickling?
I'll go with that.
Council member Val?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor Marshall.
All right. One important thing is 3.10.5, there's some case law here. Remember that while you're sitting as council members, members of the public may sometimes complain about individual staff members, or even the council itself. But the council should not respond to comments about employees or an employee's performance. One, your type of government is that the city manager has been delegated as the quote boss of, of all the employees. And so he can hear that, but discussing it among yourselves, one creates a potential issue vis-à-vis the authority, because Dave is, is, is the boss. And second, all, you also have rights, the employees have rights to appeal any adverse decision to the council. And so you want to be very, very careful that you're not making comments about employee complaints or stuff, because if there is some action, and an employee appeals, then if you've made comments, the allegation is that you're, you prejudiced, that you're biased, and that you cannot participate in any appeal right. So we just, again, it's, it's the protection of the employee rights, and as well as just the whole procedural process. So just kind of remember that. And again, the Brown Act has been amended such that now there's disruption of the meetings, which means that we cannot conduct the people's business. So if people are interrupting, shouting, screaming, they're allowed to, to talk and voice, and, and express their, their opinions. But if the conduct becomes such that you cannot conduct business, then you give them a warning, and if they still are refusing to, to, to allow the regular business to continue, you can ask that they be removed from the chambers. The whole purpose behind that is because people should not be able to disrupt other people's business that comes before the council. So you give them a warning, and then if, if not, and if it's just that rises to the point where we cannot conduct business, because the yelling and screaming is so loud, or it's taking control, or there are threats, you can remove that person so that you can get on with the regular business. You shouldn't be allowed to be held hostage by, by, by people, and so...
I can ask them to please leave the room, and if they do not leave the room, that's why we have law enforcement in the background to escort them out.
That is correct, and I've, I've been involved in situations where that has actually And then basically, you can in fact actually ask the entire, everyone to leave. And then you can allow people back in that were not, that were not disruptive ones.
Right.
Press can always come back. You don't have that. You haven't had press here in a while. Okay. 4.1, just compensation, you get, here are the list, you get $300 per month, taxable. So your check may actually be lower. And we have meetings, which as a matter of course, you are allowed to be reimbursed. If there is, if you look at 4.31D, such meeting that come to the city manager or council within sufficient time to seek council approval at a regular meeting, you can, when you're supposed to ask for, if it's not one of these meetings, ask for permission so that you can be paid and reimbursed. If there's not time, you ask the city manager, and he can authorize that approval. Again, at 4.441, I'm adding the word request to the agenda. And again, if you've gone to one of these meetings that are in the agenda, you are, the policy says you should give a report as to what happened at the meeting. Again, the city's sending you out to these meetings, and so it's good for the other council members, as well as the public, to understand what occurred at those meetings. And you get reimbursed for your conference expenses. 5.1, how we doing so far in terms of pace? Am I going too, talking too quickly, or? Okay. Yessenya's giving me that look, and so I just kind of... Again, communication roles of city council and staff. Remember that you have a council manager form of government, so most communications and direction from the council are either at a meeting or in discussions with, with Dave. Remember that the council establishes a policy, and it's up to staff to execute that policy. And the council establishes policy through action of the council at a meeting. And so again, remember that the whole purpose of the Brown Act and being a council is to take action, provide direction at a meeting, and then it's up to staff to execute that, that direction. So this is what 5.2 talks about. We go into 5.3 about various procedures in terms of how the, how the council should handle individual things. It's basically, remember, in, in most instances, is please refer citizen issues, comments, complaints to the city manager for, for handling. Adjudicative decisions, this is a new section I want to talk about, because there's been a lot of case decisions. And adjudicative decisions are when there's an appeal from the planning commission for some action, or like we had at the last, being the vehicle appeal. Those are, it's called adjudicative. They're not legislative. Legislative decision is one where you make a policy. And you can make your own policy, you don't, you, you're allowed to be biased when you make a legislative decision, because that's why you've been elected. You've been elected to do something, you've run on a platform, and so you can be biased in terms of making a legislative decision. Again, it's, it's, you know, whether you're an R, a D, or an independent, or green, or you know, whatever, that's why you've been elected, to effectuate policies that are in your campaign. Okay, adjudicative decisions are different. Those are decisions where you're acting, just considered as a jury. So there you have to be fair and impartial. You can still have, you know, your own experiences and, and your own thoughts, but for that hearing, you have to be fair and impartial. You have to consider the evidence that is presented to the council at those hearings. And so the one request that is in here is that if, let's just say that there's a CUP appeal hearing, or something like that, and staff's going to present all the evidence, what happened at the planning commission, bring it to the council, and let's just say you really wanted to do some more research, and maybe go look at the site and stuff like that to understand. What we're asking is that during that, the hearing of the appeal, you disclose that you went to the site to gather this information, so that that's part of the record, so that the record is clear of terms of what evidence and what matters were considered in this adjudicative decision, or jury-like decision. So I added that to clarify. And again, just 5.4, council and staff relations. Basically, all these points are be nice to the members of the public and staff. Okay, council, 6.1, lists all the council actions, and these are all the various... Okay, council, 6.1, lists all the council actions, and these are all the various actions that the council can do. I did add 6.1.7, just to put it in here so that if during the meeting, I can remember it, because I forget. Certain actions require three votes of the council to pass a resolution, ordinance, or payment of money. So contracts, you need three votes. And so, so if you only, if it's, certain things are a two-to-one vote, if they're one of these things, it does not pass. So you have to, so you need three votes. Vons was a two-to-one decision, because Vons wasn't a resolution. That's the big one. When that came to the council, there were only three council members that were permitted to vote on that. It was a two-to-one vote, but it wasn't a resolution. It was just a minute order from that and stuff. So that's why that was able to go through, even though it was only two-to-one. And if you have stain, basically, you need three votes to act. So if you have stain, your vote does not count as a yes. It's really a no, because it's not counted. Informal action, there are, you can give, you can, again, during the public portion of the meeting, you can ask for information. You can provide direction to bring information to you, but again, there is no action. If there is an action item on the agenda, where we're seeking some clarification or direction on how to act, again, we make certain that we're getting clarification from the mayor when the vote is made as to what that direction, what that action item is. And so we're always very, very careful when we're voting on things to make certain we know exactly what the request for action is. When you're not voting on something like a formal action, but you're providing direction to staff, this is why we're very clear here, is to make certain that we understand, so that we can go ahead and take that action and bring it back to the council. 7.1, this is how we run the meetings. It's basically, the mayor has a role of running the meetings, and this basically goes to how motions are made. A motion is made, and it requires a second. If it does not require, if it does not get a second, the motion is dead, and so no other action can be taken. And again, the whole purpose of that is if there's only one council member interested in it, doesn't make any sense to spend more time on it. And then there are all the kind of secondary motions that can come. I won't get into this, but there are a lot of different motions. These are based on Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which replaced Robert's Rules of Order for legislative bodies. It's now used by most public entities in California. And so these are all the kind of motions that you can make. 7.4 deals with decorum. Again, remember that the golden rule is to be nice to staff and members of the public, and remember that during your council meetings, it's appropriate to allow members of the public to speak, have members of the public, if they're discussing something, have them address the council, not each other. And when you're making your comments, it's best to address the issue and not each other. And so, again, always, bear in mind that you're here representing individual, you're representing members of the city, and when you attack one another, you're actually attacking every person that voted for that other council person. So try and just speak to the issues and not personality.
Can we go back to 7.3.1.1?
7.3.1.1, yes.
A council member makes a motion, another council member seconds the motion, and the mayor or city attorney may state the motion. We really don't do that.
That's why I changed it to "may."
Okay. We'll just continue just where we did. Okay.
Yeah. Because that's, sometimes it's, it's just too much. It's just too much.
As written, and whatever.
Okay.
Hi.
I think, was one issue on? I think that one of the things is on 7.4.9, is that once the council acts, it's hopeful that all of the other council members, even if you disagree, will support that decision, because that's the action of the council as a whole. You are, you do have a First Amendment right to speech, so we can't prohibit you from commenting on that, but remember that any communication that you send out is an individual communication, and you're speaking individually, so you don't use city letterhead. You can legally identify yourself as a council person, but you can't use city letterhead, and your position is not the official position of the city. The official position of the city is what the council acted on. Okay, just kind of going through the key points, because a lot of this hasn't changed. The one thing that we want to, again, this is all about conduct during the council meeting, is also provides rules for the council to enforce for members of the public. This is going toward disruption. So these are the rules that follow what the Brown Act, this is more specific than in, than in earlier. This is kind of like the nuts and bolts as to how to go about requesting a member of the public cease and desist from disrupting meetings, giving them a warning, and then, worst-case scenario, having them escorted out. Somewhere in here, and I don't know where it is, but you do have the ability, when there are big events for the city, you have many members of the public, you can allow one member of the public to speak on behalf of others. They can see their time to that person. You've done that all the time here, but there is a formal rule for that. I just don't remember where it is in here, but I've, that puts it in there. And then, let's go to training and conferences. You are encouraged to go to official conferences. It's really a great way to learn about things and get different ideas. And so you're entitled to go, you're entitled to reimbursement, and again, upon returning, you're asked to provide a brief summary of what you learned at the conference, so that other council members and members of the public know that the money has been well spent. So that is a sprint through the policy manual that took us, I think, five meetings to do years ago. I've made some of the suggested changes, and I will make the change, about two minutes for public comment, three minutes for agenda items. Any other changes or thoughts?
The only other item that I didn't see in here that I think we're doing relatively well at right now, from what I can tell, is just making sure that city staff receives correspondence from the public that we receive individually in a timely manner. I know when, I think it may have been the Dear topic, where there was such a large volume of correspondence, and some that came in very last minute, it was difficult for city staff to be able to take some of that correspondence to then share with the rest of the council. And so there was discussion of both wanting to ensure that council is forwarding that, or even asking, when people are sending in correspondence, they're forwarding it to the right people, including the city clerk and/or city manager's office, and then also that we're doing it in a timely manner, so that it's available well before the meeting starts. At that time, I think Gabby had mentioned possibly like a four o'clock cutoff to ensure that they had time, you guys had time. I don't know if that's enough time, but maybe something to that, into the procedure section. It's similar to the adjudicative information about revealing what it is that you've received, but it has to do more with the written communication.
I will add that, and my question is, do you want to, I can bring this back with all the revisions. We can just put it on consent for you to review and do that.
That's right.
So that'll be at an upcoming meeting.
Okay.
Good. That's all I have for that.
So you won't have to read, make a whole new copy of this, right? You can just write the revisions and something?
I will send you just the revisions that we've mentioned today, the two.
Okay, great. That's awesome. Thank you.
Got it.
Okay. Now, if we would please stand just for a moment, for a little invocation, or a little silent prayer. In the last two weeks, many of you know that we lost Rosie Cadman last Thursday, Butch Azavito, famous musician, first name Victor, which nobody ever knew, and Pat Meister, longtime resident of Avalon. Announcements and written communications?
City staff received one written communication regarding item number 12, the extension of the moratorium, from Leslie Miller. It was in support of the extension.
Department head reports.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council members, and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. Big news this week, we did it. We replaced the carpet in the council chambers. Yay. The Public Works crew and the local contractor moved the old carpet, repaired the flooring, including the area here in the dais. The chairs were steam cleaned. They actually look brand-new, but they were steam cleaned. We had a small hiccup with the glue, but the process went really fast, smooth, and the results were outstanding. The hardest part of the process was actually picking the color. We went through probably 10 different iterations. It was a very collaborative decision. Public Works doesn't pick colors, according to Bob, which I kind of agree. So we're very, very happy with the results. Let's see, it's been a really busy summer thus far for Public Works. We're extremely busy. The crew is doing routine maintenance. You see them at 5:00 in the morning. Sometimes they come at 4:00 in the morning. They're doing sweeping, washdown, cemetery trimming, park cleanup, front street landscape, irrigation replacements. And then, in between the routines, they get to work on repair and restoration projects, like the street striping throughout town, pouring a concrete pad here in our city hall parking lot for the four transit vehicles, replacing, adding new hand sanitizers and porta-potties, playground flooring, patching repairs. Let's see, and on top of that, all of that, they still respond to emergencies, like the freshwater break that we had with Edison last week at Avalon School. Some of you might have seen the nice river flowing through Avalon Canyon. I saw many kids playing in that. Luckily, it was fresh water. Let's be clear on that. Then, on top of that, Public Works responds to public complaints, like graffiti. We've had a rash of that in the last month, working with law enforcement on a public campaign about it, but also just being more vigilant of the graffiti. Leaks, sewage smells, and spills, abandoned trash pickups, restroom repairs, just to name a few of the items that we are working on. I'm truly so proud and impressed of the crew. They work continuously, again, at 4:00 in the morning, 5, 6, and with a smile, even when it feels like you can't move with thousands of people out there and trying to get heavy equipment. Of course, we plan around that and work around that, but so proud of them. The new full-time mechanic and the two new part-time maintenance workers that started on the 24th are working out really well. They are trained, have become familiar with the routine, and the two new maintenance workers are Thursday through Sunday to help with the weekend demand. And if you see Beto and Fred, please say hi and welcome them to Team City. All right, thank you very much. Any questions?
Counsel? No? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to jump the line, but we have a national night out tonight at 6:00 PM, so I wanted to get back out there and help them set up. We need me, Madam Mayor, city council, city staff, city attorney, everybody. Since our last council meeting, we've had 12 arrests total. Five of those were drunk in public. One of those was for domestic violence, one was for possession of narcotics, three were for trespassing, and two were for battery. We responded to, or self-initiated, 253 calls for service, and the public called for 122 of those. We made 18 traffic stops, and we are really working on enforcement of the ped laws on bikes and helmets and that kind of thing. We're still working with the city, and we're all working together on getting a tow yard, which would make a tremendous difference as far as enforcement of some of the traffic laws. The unfortunate reality is that a lot of these bikes shouldn't be on the road at all, and I think once we make a little difference taking them and storing them for a little while, and making them go through the trouble of paying the fines and that kind of thing to get them back, you'll see a lot less bikes on the road. So hopefully soon, that's going to be something to change. It's not really something we want to do, but we know from experience that that's really a game changer when it comes to making a difference as far as traffic laws are concerned. Like I said...
So, excuse me. So you find them, you put them in the yard, they pay for the, and then, but what's the difference? Why are they, what are they being fined for?
Right now, what we're doing is we're making a traffic stop, and we're writing citation, and...
Because of?
We're waiting for family to come by and help them get the bike home, or we're saying, hey, walk the bike home. And then, a day or two later, we're seeing the same bike on the road riding around.
Is it because of helmets, or illegal bikes, or?
It's a variety of things.
Traffic stops?
Helmets, traffic stops, speeding.
Thank you.
You know, these bikes we're seeing now, these little, they look like dirt bikes, are going 40 miles an hour, and they're very dangerous, and we're really concerned that at some point, we're going to see some serious injuries.
Right, yeah.
And I'm sure it's going to happen, if we don't kind of get to a stop. And I think we have actually made a big dent in it. I mean, we see a lot less than we were, but unfortunately, there's still a few that are still out there doing it, and we're really trying to get a hold of those. So I think the next step will be to take these bikes and to store them, and to do that. Traffic laws, and I don't want to go in, you know, all the changes in California, but you used to be able to do a little bit more, you used to be able to impound motor vehicles for a 30-day period a lot of times, and that is pretty much not a thing anymore. There's certain criteria you still can, but when it comes to like the electric motorcycles, that's really not going to be a thing. It's basically going to be, we're going to, you know, if you're, and we're going to have our own ideas of when to do this. It's not going to be initially, but if there's someone that's repeating the behavior, and, you know, they're going to get hurt, they basically will take the bike, and they're going to store that bike, and they're going to have to get a release from us, and then go to the city and pay the fines for the storage fees, the tow fees, and that kind of thing.
Okay.
And it's just a way to kind of maybe think twice about violating the law in town.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And this isn't only in Avalon. This is everywhere right now. These bikes have come over, and I can't, obviously don't know the numbers, but I was over town this weekend, and everywhere I was, there were these little bikes flying all over the place. So it's a common thing we're all dealing with. Like I said earlier, we have a national night out tonight at 6:00 PM. Please come out. We'll have the search and rescue team out there doing some demonstrations. We'll be out there talking. We'll be giving out stickers. We also should have the Tarzana Treatment Center out there, which is a great resource for anyone that has, you know, family or friends, or themselves, or in any kind of, you know, issues with drugs or alcohol. It's a great resource to have, and they're fantastic. We're giving out free hot dogs tonight and drinks, so please come out. I mean, yeah, I mean, we have quite a few, so we're hoping to get rid of all of them. So anybody, come out, and you're welcome, and it's...
Meeting's over.
Yeah. That's all I have tonight. Any more questions?
Yeah, where's that event going to be?
I'm sorry?
Where's the event going to be on?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's at the...
Front Street?
At the stage, on Front Street, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
See you out there.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Orncar Starf and Harbor Master. Since my last report Tuesday, July 16th, patrol moored 1,723 boats for a total of 6,399 nights, proving to be our largest month yet. Patrol warned or advised 40 individuals of municipal code violations, which included two warnings for violations within the marine-protected areas. Patrol wrote four citations, responded to eight medical calls, and assisted the public 99 times. Patrol did 278 security patrols of the harbor facilities and the surrounding waters, and assisted... and assisted the Coast Guard two times. Avalon Harbor also received our patrol boat seven back from an extensive overhaul. It received all-new paint, all-new non-skid coating on the decks, and an updated electronics package. She's now ready for another twenty years of service. Happy to have her back. Any questions?
Good, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city staff, counsel, and Scott. Welcome back. In July, we ran a total of 147 calls, 112 medical, 35 fire-related. And then last Wednesday, City Manager and I went with some of our team. We missed you, Mayor.
I know, I missed you.
To the Medal of Valor dinner to recognize Baywatch Paramedic Captain Brian Carey, his partner Specialist Sean Kennedy, Captain John Meffert, and Captain Christian Cisneros, and Engineer Frank Menudo for a call that went really well in December. And we just reinforced the great teamwork that we do work with Baywatch and County Fire and the excellent training that we receive from them to keep up our CE skills, our EMT skills. Because the guys, they all said that was just like walking into a training when that call came in. So to top it, you might get your dinner after all. It was the two paramedics and Christians' first shift back from the awards dinner. On Saturday, we had a sixty-year-old female, I won't do too many details, unresponsive, CPR in progress. Our guys took over. We applied what we have, a Lucas device from Baywatch, to do compressions for approximately six to eight minutes. And they transported her down to the chamber, and eventually she walked onto a helicopter to go to the mainland.
Yes.
It was a great teamwork again, same three of the five, same guys. Our other guys, they did a great job on that. And then you might have seen, there was a headline on July 28th. Around 7:00 AM, we had a pretty significant boat fire on the backside. It made the news, fifty-one-foot boat, fully involved, sank. And then I think they recovered it this weekend. But the Coast Guard was on it, Baywatch was on it. They were right away asking, how close is it to the island? They had helicopters already coming if we needed it, because it was back at Salta Verde, right inside. But luckily, it was blowing offshore that morning.
And nobody was on the boat?
There was five people onboard. Five were brought in, two were transported, just minor stuff.
Oh, good. Wow, awesome.
Any questions?
Questions? No, thank you.
He's coming.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel, Matt Baker, Finance Director. Just wanted to provide a quick update on June tourism numbers. Our moorings and wharfage were both up around 6% from June of last year. TOT was down currently less than 3%. There's a few ratepayers, so that might improve slightly. I do expect it to still be down, but it might be closer to 2% when it's all said and done. So, you know, while it's never good to be down, it is improvement from some of the numbers we were seeing in March, April, May, so hopefully July continues that upward trend. Next meeting, I'll give final numbers for the year as far as revenues go, but just wanted to provide a quick update on June. Any question?
So 2% less is how much?
Then, let's see...
You know what I mean?
Twelve thousand ballpark.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, thanks. That was a trick question. Thank you, Matt.
Hello, counsel and Madam Mayor. We've expanded our outrigger program to include a kids program, thanks to Billy Whitford from Newport Aquatics for lending us four one-man canoes and a two-man canoe. With lifeguard Dempsey helping, we've been able to take every junior lifeguard out for weekly paddling sessions. This has generated a lot of excitement amongst these young water enthusiasts. We're looking to extend this program through October through the support of the county lifeguard and Newport Aquatics. As summer winds down and as our local kids prepare to head back to school, the city has partnered with Austin Henry and the Avalon Smart Homes for the Avalon Backpack Giveaway. The event will take place on August 19th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at Avalon's Kids Park. Every student from TK, being transitional kindergarten to fifth grade, will receive a backpack as well as all the school supplies. We'll also have a fun back-to-school bash with food, bouncy houses, art projects, games, and a dance party. Thanks to Austin's great fundraising efforts, we'll also be able to provide additional supplies for teachers directly. So please come out and join us for a fun time and get ready for the new school year. It's bittersweet that summer is almost over, but we are excited to announce our new community service fall programming. Avalon Youth Football kicks off September 22nd with Evaluation Day on September 8th. Categories are TK through second grade, third through fifth grade, sixth through eighth grade. For more information, visit thecityofavalon.com website. Mariachi by Fernando Gonzalez. A music class begins Monday, September 2nd from 4:30 to 6:30 PM at Tremont Hall. This class is for all ages, and it's free. Karate with Sensei Jessica Hickman returns on September 4th. Classes are every Wednesday from 3:30 to 6:30 and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Tremont Hall for ages three to fourteen. Dance Tech is back with Catalina Mace. Runs every Friday, starting September 20th, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and will be held, 3:00 PM, 7:00 PM. Classes include ballet, tap, and creative dances for ages three to twelve. Kids at Play, drama class for kids age seven to thirteen held by Sean Branick, begins September 10th and will be held every Tuesday and Thursday at Tremont Hall from 3:00 PM to 6:30 PM. ACT Act, or Avalon Community Theater, follows Kids at Play on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM at Tremont Hall. Start time is to be determined. Our newest program, Jiu-Jitsu, starts Monday, September 2nd. This martial arts, based on grappling and ground fighting, is considered the best self-defense arts in the world due to using leverage over strength. Taught by Professor Seth Hopkins, who has over thirty years of experience and who has recently moved to the island. The schedule is as follows. Adult classes ages fourteen and up are at Tremont Hall every Monday, Wednesday from 6:30 to 8:00, Fridays from 7:00 to 8:30, and kid classes on Saturday at 12:00 PM. For more information and breakdown of prices and classes, please visit our website at cityofavalon.com under Community Services. So as you can see, currently right now, starting September, every day inside Tremont Hall, we have something going on from 3:00 till 9:00 at night, programming for the community. So Sundays would be the only day we would have if somebody's looking to have a party. So, last but not least, senior primetimers are back. Come join this rowdy group of fifty-five-year-olds for their first event of the year. We'll be going to Two Harbors on Wednesday, September 18th. We'll take the Cyclone over, enjoy a day of the beach activities, games, and have lunch, all for $30. You can sign up at cityofavalon.com or see me at City Hall. Is there any questions?
Val's out of town, so put her on the list.
Yeah. I'll get it in the newspaper as well.
No, I know, that's awesome. That's awesome. Wow. That is a lot going on. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The Next Vehicle Hearing is scheduled for Friday, August 23rd at 8:00 AM here in the council chambers. The IT manager recruitment closed last Friday. We had over fifty applicants, I want to say a total of fifty-two. So we've since reviewed the applications, narrowed it down, and we're going to work on inviting those top applicants in for oral board interviews. So we're super excited, really great candidates. The code enforcement was very busy last month, in the month of July. They'd issued 392 citations. They focused on abandoned property, abatement, and illegal dumping at Pebbley Beach. They issued five stop work order violations, seventeen red tags, responded to forty animal control calls for service. They had fifteen public nuisance reports, many of them related to graffiti around the city, and handled thirty emergency traffic control calls for service. In addition, PERC, our wastewater treatment operator, notified the city that grease levels after Fourth of July in the wastewater treatment plant were extraordinarily high and in a strain on our infrastructure. So code enforcement went to all, I don't remember the, like, around forty food service establishments in the city to conduct fog inspections and ended up issuing fifteen notices of violation. CRNR noticed an increase and used cooking oil pickup after those violation notices were sent. And PERC noticed an improvement at the wastewater treatment plant as well. So proper grease disposal, very important for our city infrastructure, for our businesses to keep operating. So I really appreciate all the businesses' work in improving that. Two more items. The Pebbley Beach landfill vertical extension project. The significant ecological area permit application has been submitted to LA County Regional Planning as of last Friday. So we'll follow up, our consultants will follow up in person this week to make sure they received all the paperwork and documentation that they needed. And then finally, I just got notice from LAFCO that the city's updated municipal service review and sphere of influence are headed to their commission on August 14th at 9:00 AM. So I'll definitely be in attendance, representing the city on that.
But what does that mean? I'm sorry.
It's been work in progress for the last year or so, working with Paula at BBK and Kelly in city planning. So LAFCO, the last municipal service review they did was in 2004. And they look at all city services that we provide for our community and our visitors on island. And one of the big focus of the review is land and land use. And so they look at the sphere of influence map that was done in 2004 and look to see if any revisions need to be made. There are no revisions from the last one that was done in 2004, quickly as far as I could see, just looking at my little phone during this council meeting. So I'll be sure to look at it in more detail tomorrow, but yeah.
Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah.
City Manager?
Thanks, Russell. Good afternoon, counsel. Couple things tonight, I just want, the chief already mentioned it, but I did, it was my privilege to attend the Medal of Valor ceremony last week. And going into it, I knew that we were receiving, or our department was receiving, a distinguished service award. I thought we were one of maybe twenty departments getting recognized. We were the distinguished service award winner.
Wow.
It was pretty impressive. I mean, I thought everybody was there. I figured they're all, we're going to be sitting through all these. You know, they're not getting picked out of people like me. They're getting picked out of people like them, you know, that they stood out. And it was pretty cool to see our department and those guys, you know, getting recognized. And, you know, Chief Allegria should also get recognized. He recognizes them, but it's also, you know, his professionalism and his lead with those guys. So it was definitely a neat situation. And he's right, you know, I don't know that we'll win back-to-back for what they did, but they should.
Just backdate the thing or move it forward if you don't get it next year.
Right. And then just want to mention, thank Orne and Kevin Schmidt for getting the flagpole. If you notice, the flagpole down at the mall, it's up. It's been a long time getting here, having it ordered, having it prepared for installation, having it installed, and it's ready to go. So tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM will be the initial flag raising at that flagpole. So we invite anybody to come out and attend. It's not going to be a huge ceremony, but we want to do recognize that the first time those flags are going up on that pole. And just for everybody's information, the gaff sticking out is the position of honor, and that's where the American flag will be. It's not going to be all the way to the top of the pole. The top of the pole will be used for warning flags and storm warning flags, and the other flags will come down. So we're excited to see that tomorrow. And next week, a week from tomorrow, on the 14th, Congressman Robert Garcia will be on island. He's going to be presenting the city with the federal earmark funds that he championed for us. It was, he did this about a year ago, so he's going to be here in the afternoon on the 14th. We'll have a ceremony, and we'll get that information out as soon as we have the details on it down at the mall with him presenting that check to Mayor and counsel. So again, thank you to Congressman Garcia. I think this is the third or fourth time he has been out here in as short a time as a congressman. He has really paid a lot of attention to us, and his staff is constantly checking in to see if there's anything we need. So again, thank you to him. And then finally, I just wanted to acknowledge that I had a conversation yesterday with Southern California Edison regarding the water testing issue that they sent notices out to all ratepayers about a month or so ago. They've advised me that all of the mistesting sites have subsequently been tested. They've all tested well within the compliance standards as required. These sites, there was some mistesting. Most of those sites, they told me, are essentially offline, but there's still active sites that are under the requirement to be tested. So they'll be going forward, and they've made some internal changes on checks and balances of how that's going to be checked from different departments to make sure that there are no missed tests going forward.
But wasn't there only like ninety-three missed tests and over since 2019 or something crazy?
It goes back even longer than that in the past. And there was, it's a small fraction of missed tests, but because of, any missed test is an issue. It's a presumption that, you know, it's not a clean test. So they had to send that notice out, but it's good to know and let everybody else know that subsequently, all of those lines are testing within standard. So, you know, they will follow up, talking to Edison. They will come at a meeting in the future here to speak to counsel and address and answer any questions. We're trying to arrange that meeting to coincide. They also have a request with the city to have the use of City Hall as an emergency station in case anything goes wrong with their department. So we'll be bringing an agreement forward with them. So at that meeting, maybe not the sec, maybe not August 20th, but maybe the first meeting in September, they'll be here, and we can address those, they'll answer those questions, and we'll have that agreement in front of you. Any questions?
City Attorney?
Nice to be back. That's all I have.
Okay, okay. Councilmember reports?
I'll go first, if that's okay, because it's real short. I like the fact that the captain came in and talked about the e-bikes, but I would really like to see, because I've asked for it before, is there ordinance requiring everybody on an electric bike to wear a helmet? I've got to the point where he made the comment of, you know, we don't want them to get hurt. I don't care if they're going to get hurt now. I'm worried about the people that have to interact with them when they come and run them over or almost run them over. I get comments from people every day about the guy, everybody on these electric bikes. And they're not being used in the manner that was intended, which was to make it easier for transportation. They're using it because they don't have the pedal. That's, and they, they're not old enough to drive a car. It's just getting ridiculous. So, but I would really like to see a helmet, so that people coming over on the boat that come over with their e-bike, that don't come over with a helmet, that they can't ride that bike unless they have a helmet. It's just, it's just ridiculous that you, that there's, the bikes, the people who rent the bikes here in Avalon require that they wear a helmet. And because they see everybody else here that doesn't have it on, then they're not going to wear it either. It's, to me, it's a big safety issue, but it just drives me crazy that this has become a big issue in the state. Yeah. Because it was, the idea was supposed to be a cheaper form of transportation, and it's become something totally different, so. That's, I just, I'll get off my soapbox.
Councilmember, Delarosa?
Even my thoughts. A couple of things also for myself. The school did put out a notice today that they are looking for teachers for the preschool program they're starting to run. Everything's ready to go, but they just need, let me look up MS Tech, sorry about that. She said it's going to be through the CDC. They're recruiting for all positions. Ideally, they would need supervisor teacher, instructional aide. Ideally, they would need supervisor teacher, instructional aide, a substitute, but there will be incentives for all positions. Their director for the CDC is not at the office at the moment, I believe she gets back next Monday. So once she does, she's gonna get more information on what those incentives look like. And another thing, we, I believe we were all on the email. I was actually very grateful that Daniel Felt sent it out about AB ten thirteen. Right away, I, it sounded great, so I looked more into it. And I knew that Brian from Lontal's office was coming for Catalinaville, so I reached out. He brought a couple kids over. Those kids are for type forty-eight permits. And we actually saw that the Marlins are already in compliance, so that's awesome. There's two more others that do have type forty-eight, but they're already in contact with Lontal's office, so that's already in the works. But in that same sense, I want to say thank you to Daniel and any other community member that really makes an effort to be involved, because it really does take a village, not just us up here. So thank you.
And on that one issue, I mentioned it to, to the city manager as well, and he said that the follow-through and that really isn't a city's responsibility. It's, tell me.
I mean, we're working, we're talking to ABC and Sheriff's Department to make sure compliance as far as enforcement of that. But yeah, you're absolutely right.
I believe that Lontal also wanted to do more like an educational outreach and so what the next steps would be if they needed more test kits and things like that.
Okay, I guess I'm next. I was, I was gone on family business a lot, but, so I'm digging through emails and stuff and I did see that and thank you, Daniel. And after all that discussion that we just had about the thing, nobody better get unruly because we don't have any police here, okay? They all left. They went downtown. You know, we were just talking about that, you know, and we have to ask the cops to skirt them out, but we don't have any. So everybody behave yourselves, please. But also, another thing that I learned, and because there's something on the agenda later on tonight, I would like to request, and since I don't have to send it in an email, but I would like to request something to get put on the agenda in the very near future. I would like to have a discussion about how council and mayor and staff and the general public actually feel about having a storefront recreational dispensary on the island. Because I've been looking behind the scenes and all that stuff and so I don't want to spend any more time and have staff spend any more time or anything until we get kind of a feel. So if we could have some sort of a discussion about having a dispensary, a storefront dispensary at some point in town, I'd appreciate that.
And we also, though, to, to get the ball rolling or stop the ball is finding out with the current laws, the ability to even transport cannabis to the island.
We're, we're good.
Oh, so, okay, so that's.
Well, part of it.
Okay, so we need, put that into the thing to let us know, because I don't, we don't want to spin our wheels if it's not something that's gonna be allowed for a while or whatever, but it's a conversation we should have.
But I'd like, I'd like to know if it's, if it's worth going that further or if we should stop it.
Perfect. Good. I agree.
That's it, Mary?
That's it.
I am attending Gateway Cities Cog tomorrow. Had a great meeting with a couple of SCAG representatives who are on the role of utilizing funds that SCAG won from the CPUC for broadband, for technical assistance, the Lata grant. And so we're one of the cities in the running, hopefully, to receive some of that technical assistance. We had discussed possibly using money set aside in the budget to do a study for broadband and other types of communication. And so this might cover a huge chunk of that and ask that even if we didn't get approved for it to be kept in the loop on what it is they're doing, so we can do my favorite kind of R and D, rip off and duplicate and be able to hopefully do it at a better cost than it would have cost us originally or with people who are familiar with the area. And then also want to just give another thanks to Daniel Feltz as well regarding AB ten thirteen. You laid out a lot of really great ideas and steps, so I think some of those are already in discussion with the entities that are responsible for it. And I did ask actually if we find that the funding for that is a challenge for any of the restaurants, that we look at possibly having a pool of money that we set aside for that in town that people could utilize. So we'll see if that needs to come to fruition or not, but thank you so much again for reaching out. And then last but not least, I have a number of work-life conferences happening in October, September and October. And so I was gonna make a request to council and city staff if it was possible to potentially shift the October meetings, which was part of what we were talking about, from the first and third Tuesdays to the second and fourth Tuesdays in October. It would move it to the eighth and the twenty-second, I believe. So it would be the two weeks bordering Gateway Cities, excuse me, Cal Cities instead of the same week as Cal Cities. So anyway, something to consider if you guys can think about that and let me know what you think. That's all.
The Forense came in again yesterday and I guess there was a little glitch in the morning that was not the city's responsible fault at all, but the afternoon went swimmingly. Your Harbor guys that were there, they were wonderful and, and we had less volunteers, which is a concern going forward, but it went really, really, really well yesterday. So thanks to the Harbor Department and all the other volunteers. I attended the hunting course, which didn't end up being a hunting course because I was the only one there. So for those of you that might be hunting enthusiasts or just want to learn gun safety, I'm sure Ryan Cordero will be trying to publish that again in the future. So anyway, that's it. And then something to be discussed maybe for next summer, before next summer, and I mentioned it to you briefly, is perhaps we can just limit umbrellas to the beach instead of the tents and all of the big things that are blocking people's view. People put them up, they don't even, they're not even in there, because beaches are packed. Plus with all of the big giant wagons that they're bringing with all of their ice chests and everything, it's really becoming cluttersome. So perhaps we can talk about this for next year. That's all I have. Okay, consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. All communications, this is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You'll be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken. Thanks.
Good evening, mayor and council. Jim Luchihan, Love Catalina Island. Like to start off with a public acknowledgement of some very special act that took place on Sunday morning, which you may not even be aware of. One of our residents, Tyler Wilson, who is quite tech savvy, was called upon in the absence of a Catalina broadband engineer being available to go up onto Mount Ada and climb up the hillside and reboot our internet for all of us here. So on one of the busiest days of the year, on one of the busiest weekends of the year, we would have been absent that service were it not for Tyler and Catalina Broadband couldn't get somebody here for many hours due to the boats being sold out, chicken and egg going there. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge Tyler for that heroic effort that no doubt brought a lot of revenue into the city that would have escaped if no one could swipe credit cards or try and do it on a MiFi where it drops. Related to that, thank you, mayor. I also wanted to acknowledge the many volunteers who've given hours all throughout the year for the Forense. And we do still have a couple more visits coming up in the winter for that ship, so we would love more opportunity to have more engagement there. And this Saturday night, we're having a very special concert on Wrigley Stage with Taimani Gardner. The concert will begin at eight PM and the Beer Garden opens at seven. Supporting the Beer Garden supports Rotary and all of its community service work, so we hope you'll come out and buy a beer or a glass of wine while you enjoy an amazing concert. We'll have our exceptional tribute to Abba coming back in September on the fourteenth, also on Wrigley Stage, same, same situation applies. And we have, as always, our amazing raffle packages at each of those concerts. And lately, locals have been winning the raffle, so buy your tickets and keep that trend going, please. And I, just little foreshadowing for two things that I didn't hear mentioned by council member De La Rosa or Dave Hart. We have two exciting new, one returning, one new event that we're participating in with the, with the More Than Pink Walk, which has expanded this year to include a stand-up paddleboard activation. And, and then the Mexican Independence Day, which we're in the formative stages on building, but Love Catalina has come on board as a sponsor for that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add to that really quick, which actually he reminded me to, thank you. We were able to get a mammogram unit for the event, so that a mammogram unit will be here, it's Saturday, Sunday, September fourteenth and fifteenth. And you can call the clinic and start making appointments now. But there is important information that comes with that, because of course I already wanted to get one. I'm thirty-three years old, but you can only get one if you're forty years old or it runs in your, what is it, your family, your genes? Yes. So there is a certain, it is BRCA gene mutation. If that runs in you, then you are able to get that before you're forty years old. But if not, then you can only get it once you are forty.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Jim.
Yes.
Hello, everybody. Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. Not too much to report this week for you, but I just want to do a plug for my smarty pants storytime every Saturday at eleven. I do a pretty good storytime. Come on down and enjoy it. I also want to talk about our creation station, which we do Tuesdays and Fridays at four o'clock. I come up with a little craft and we get a good, good crowd of young people who enjoy doing a little art in the afternoon. Also, art-wise, coming up on Thursday, August fifteenth, I'm gonna try and do a little art class, sorta, about the art of Archibaldo, who was this artist from the sixteenth century who made surreal pictures of people with fruit. And I sort of have the idea of doing a sort of a crazy fruity art thing on that day. Might be fun. Coming up on the twenty-ninth, I'm going to have the Franklin Haynes Marionettes Company coming to close out our summer discovery program. Come and join the summer discovery program, read a book, read a couple books, get entered into a contest for these tickets I got for Raging Waters, which nobody's picking up yet, very strange. Couple of other things. I have a toddler program, Fridays at eleven, called Play and Explore, toys and parental advice, Friday mornings. Our history talk, Chuck Liddell's history talk on the second and fourth Wednesday at two PM. This one, I'm told, is going to be the history of twenty, of everything that happened in nineteen twenty-four, which was apparently some kind of a banner year. He'll tell us more. I have no idea. But also, while I've got a few seconds left, I want to do a plug for our virtual programs, which are actually looking pretty good. On the seventh tomorrow, there's going to be an online talk with a curator at the Smithsonian Library about what life is like on the space station. So that's gonna be kind of interesting. We're gonna have some career talks, careers in human resources on the twenty-seventh, and careers in libraries, oh yes, on the twenty. That's a good one. I'll be watching that one. Anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, no one else? All right. The, oh, sorry.
I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today and I want to address the recent claims from the Sheriff's Department regarding the acceptance of donations for helmets. While community contributions are valuable, I believe that given the recent budget increases allocated to the department, it is both appropriate and necessary for the Sheriff's Department to fund these safety measures directly. As the public face of safety in our community, it is crucial that the department sets the example of using its resources to ensure the protection and well-being of our citizens. Relying on public donations not only places undue burden on our community members, but also sends a message that essential safety equipment is not a priority with the current budget. Therefore, I urge the Sheriff's Department to reconsider their approach and allocate a portion of their increased budget towards the purchasing of helmets and other necessary safety equipment. This would reinforce their commitment to public safety and demonstrate responsible use of, of the funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Okay. Consent calendar.
Consent calendar, item one, senior approval of the minutes from the July second, twenty twenty-four regular city council meeting. Approved total expenditures for July eighth, twenty twenty-four through July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four totaling two million five hundred sixty-five thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. Item four, adopt a resolution accepting fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four fourth quarter treasurer's report. Item five, adopt a resolution declaring equipment listed in the resolution as surplus property and authorize the city manager to dispose of it in accordance with city policy. And finally, item six, approve the renewal of a transportation permit for Buffalo Nickel with the stated conditions.
Anybody want to pull any of those items?
Do we, I need to pull item two since I was not present for the meeting, or is watching it sufficient to allow me to vote for it?
Watching it is sufficient.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve items one through six on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Council member De La Rosa, any public comment? If not, call for the vote. What? Item number seven?
General business, item number seven, is discussion on a contract award to Olens for a reverse vending machine, and Jocelyn Francis will address that.
Good evening, mayor and city council. So tonight, I'm asking for you guys to award a contract to Olens for a reverse vending So just a little bit of background, it's budgeted in the Sears Capital Outlay Program, which is great. In July, we issued out a request for proposal. We received two proposals. Within allotted time, we received one late after the deadline. We reviewed the proposals, a panel of us reviewed the proposals, and we invited those two to do presentations to the panel. Tonight, we're requesting city council approval. Should you approve tonight, we'll work on executing the contract, prepping a location. Olens is gonna come to the island on Friday, so we can walk around the city together and find out the best location for this machine. We'll work on getting it certified through CalRecycle and then an October go-live date for this reverse vending machine. So they refer to it as the Cube is the reverse vending machine, so here's a picture of it. It can hold up to twenty-two hundred containers. It crushes the PET, the plastics and the aluminum containers. It's fully connected to the internet, so we've got like real-time reporting and statistics and alerts that SAF and CRNR can, can gather data on. There's a fifty-five inch screen that can be used to generate advertising revenue for the city to help fund the program, the monthly fees, as well as, you know, potentially buying more in the future. And it's a relatively small footprint, so it's twelve square feet, twelve, twelve square feet, kind of similar to like your, you know, normal-sized vending machine. The cost to purchase is twenty-six thousand nine hundred. There is a mobile application that Olens has, both for customers and for those that are doing maintenance and collections on the machine. In our case, that's gonna be CRNR to do the, the collections on it. So it's an electronic CRV redemption and rewards program. I downloaded the mobile app to my phone and it's super user-friendly, very simple. It will show you locations of Olens cubes. They're, have a larger presence up in the Bay Area and the San Jose area, but they have a lot of contracts that they're working on negotiating in the Southern California region with some pretty major grocery chains down here. So that's super, super exciting. It shows, you know, so there's a CRV redemption side of it, but it also kind of gamifies it a little bit. So there's a leaderboard, so we can see who, you know, is, I don't know, recycling the most in the city and as well as what your environmental impact is. And what the- And what they're working on is the ability to donate your C R V to nonprofits, which I think will be super cool.
That's cool, too.
So as far as the collection, typically, the way Olens works is they have like a gig economy where they've got folks that do the collections on it. But since we don't have a formal recycling center here, we're going to use Avalon Environmental. They'll do the collections on the machines, and they'll take it to their recycling center over town. The C R V funding will transfer hands from C R and R to Olens to, to the end user. And then C R and R will have a mobile application, so they'll get any alerts if one of the containers is getting full. And then Olens will coordinate the troubleshooting, both remote and physical maintenance on the machine, so. Back office, because it's connected to the internet, it will be real-time monitoring of the machine and the different fill levels. It uses like A I. to scan whatever it is you're throwing in there, so we'll know, you know, how many aluminum cans, how many plastic bottles, but also like, is it Coca-Cola? Is it, you know, Kirkland Water or whatnot? The regular fees that are due are five hundred and ninety-five dollars per month. That's for the software, the maintenance, the troubleshooting, and the wireless fees for that internet connectivity.
And that's our cost?
Yeah, that'll, that'll be our costs each month. And then advertisement sales are unknown at this point, so I wasn't able to include that in the staff report. It really, I think we'll have a better idea of that when we walk around on Friday together and we figure out a good location for it. The contract will be written up so that the city receives like a thirty percent net on any advertising that they're able to garner with the machine. And then just one last thing, as I was working on this agenda report, CalRecycle issued a big grant announcement for beverage recycling, and so I think this initial investment for one is great, and it'll set us up really well if we want to apply for further funding to add more machines throughout the city, so.
Yeah. My only comment is I think Vons should be paying for this. We should not be paying for this. So I think we need to approach them, whether they put the five hundred and ninety-five dollars a month in or whatever, because we are doing their job for them. They were supposed to create some kind of recycling when they built that facility and that new place, and they never have. That's my two cents. But this is wonderful news.
This is, this is, this is good. I like this. But I, I'm also concerned, I mean, I know it's an electronic age, but not everybody has a phone, so what about the people that want to do this and they, they can't do the app on their phone or whatever? There's no money in there ever, right?
Yeah, so that's something that we're going to continue working on with CalRecycle, with C R and R, with Vons, and some other storefronts on a cash option for a C R V redemption as an alternate to this machine.
Or maybe some sort of a, I don't know if the technology's there, some sort of a card reader, so if they had like a prepaid Visa card or something like that, you know, they could put that in there and it could load up, up or something like that, but, you know, because that, that was a big concern when the gas station went to no cash and just credit cards only, and it's open all the time, and a lot of people were like, well, what if I don't have a credit card? And then you can go to Vons and you can, you know, you can buy one of those, but, so this is kind of, I don't know.
No, but this is a great start.
It is a great start. I applaud your efforts. Thank you so much.
It's a good, it's not like the perfect solution, but it's like something.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
You know, it's like a good starting point.
This will keep people from having to load up those little carts and taking them over town, crushing them themselves, taking them over town, and paying the boat transportation and all of that. So this is wonderful. And the school kids can do it better, and they can use all of those little devices, you know?
Exactly.
Yeah, I think it'll be very popular with the.
Should be, adopt a senior, and then, you know, you help me out and I'll split fifty percent of my earnings with you or something.
There you go.
This is great. Okay.
Is there, so in terms of cleanliness for this, is there a sense of who is responsible for the upkeep? Is that C R and R or is that city staff?
It'll be, it'll be a combined effort, for sure. Yeah, so it'll be a mix of C R and R since they'll be doing the collections on the machine. But the area around it, you know, I've talked to Jackie about it already, but, you know, making sure there's like a spot for people to dump out liquid that might still be in the bottle or whatnot before dumping it. And, and then Olens will be here regularly doing like proactive maintenance on the machine. Yeah.
That's my question for when, if and when they need maintenance and have to come over, how are we covering, is that us covering their travels?
Uh, no, it's included in the five hundred and ninety-five dollars, yeah.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
I'm curious to see how much the recycling pickup for C R and R drops if people end up doing this instead of having it in their bins at home, too, so.
Yeah, could we just ask that they do clean it once they do the pickup? I mean, since it'll already be there? Like a rinse, just so it's not like different scheduling?
Yeah, for sure.
They'll be there.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Reminded me of something, what was it? Oh, yeah, there's a, that's a, yeah, there's liners for each of the containers inside. So, you know, C R and R will take it, and it'll be self-contained, the machine crushes, not the glass, obviously, but the aluminum and the plastic. And so then they'll have replacement liners that they put in there, and they're reusable. So, yeah. Yeah.
Questions? Yeah, thank you.
Just waiting for the mayor to come back, but I'll go ahead and start it. I'll make a motion to award a contract to Olens Inc. for procurement of one reverse vending machine, R V M., including software, maintenance, and advertising services in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and any related documents.
Second. Any comments? Call for the vote. Item number eight.
Item number eight is Island Enterprises, Inc. transportation permit application. We're asking council to receive the presentation, discuss, and if consensus is met, approve the transportation permit for Island Enterprises, Inc. to utilize a commercial vehicle permit to conduct tours in an oversized vehicle with the stated conditions.
Good morning, or good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council and staff. I'm Heather Milburn with Island Enterprises, better known as Catalina Venture Tours, and we are coming before you to propose our new safari tram to be run on our interior tours. Here's an overview, we're just going to be going over the mission, but about the tram, our operations, and statistics with it. Our mission with Catalina Venture Tours is to share the island as much as we can with tourists on our land and sea tours. In addition, our vision.
One second, it's just not showing on the screen for the public. I think Matt's checking on it real quick, sorry.
Yeah, he's working on it.
I got super excited.
Yeah. Sorry about that, thank you.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. Our vision with.
And speak into the microphone, please.
Okay. Our vision with Catalina Venture Tours is to share the beauty of the island with as many visitors on our land and sea tours. In addition, not only do we want to share the beauty of the land, we want to educate everyone coming here about the history of Avalon and the history of the interior and the environment, and how to preserve the environment when they come. And so they walk away educated, knowing more than they did when they arrived here. Our safari tram is a brand-new Ram thirty-five hundred. It holds twenty-five passengers. It's gas-powered. It's twenty-two people in the back and then three up in the front cab. It's three hundred and forty-eight inches, and also we have installed safety belts for everyone, a G P S tracking system, which not only catches where our drivers are at all times, but also monitor their, their speed as they're driving through the city and in the interior. It also has in addition a rear-facing camera so that the driver can see all passengers at all times. This is our interior route. The vehicle will be stored up at Roaring Canyon. It'll be brought down just for our tours, which is at, the location starting is at the mole, which will go through the city, then directly out to the conservancy property. It takes approximately fifteen minutes from the mole to get up to the conservancy property, and then the rest of the tour is from there on out, and then back down. Currently, our schedule for interior tours, we are running that seven days a week. We're hoping to start at eight fifteen. We have a ten-thirty, twelve forty-five, and a three o'clock P. M. tour, with hopes to possibly do another evening tour as well. We also have a city tour with Mount Ada, which is only three days a week at eleven o'clock and one o'clock.
But that will not be with this vehicle?
Correct, that will not be with that vehicle. The interior tour is with the safari tram, and the city tour is with the general, and that's only three days a week. We'd like to bring this vehicle to the island and have it used for our tours because we want to be on the same competitive landscape as our competition. And right now, they're running larger vehicles than ours that hold more capacity, and we have seen such an increase of visitors to the island that want these tours that this is a need for us. This vehicle will replace our Ford Econoline van, and then within the next year, Catalina Adventure Tours would like to replace the general with another one of these trams, and we would move the general off the island. And in addition, all of our drivers and onboard naturalists will have gone through the conservancy naturalist training, so they're well-educated on the island, too, so everyone that is on our tour can come back knowing a lot more. Here are a few statistics. In the last year, the last six months, the beginning of the year to the previous year of twenty twenty-three, for the first six months, we saw an increase of fifty-eight percent in customer visits on our land tours. This being said, this is why we need a vehicle that could hold a larger capacity so we can share this beauty of this island to those people. In addition, as you can see in year after year, from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three to current, it is an increase of visitors on our land tours, and if we are allowed to run this vehicle, my projections show that from August to December, that number will just increase more, and the amusement fee that we owe to the city of Avalon could, could see sorts of thirty thousand dollars. Just want to thank you for letting us bring this to your attention. We really love this vehicle approved. We're ready to run it, and I think it would be a really nice addition. It's a beautiful, brand-new vehicle that we could add to the island and share this, share it with everyone.
You had made a comment about bringing it to the island. Isn't it already?
Yeah, I apologize, yes, it is on the island. It's up at Roaring Canyon at the moment.
And the provision that you will take the general off by January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five?
We'd be happy to if you'll approve this, and we could then replace the general with another tram.
Do we automatically, to the city manager, do we automatically have, if they take the general off the island, do we automatically have to give them a replacement vehicle for that one?
Do we automatically have to? No.
Yeah. But the, the agreement here is that you would get the general off by January fifteenth?
We could, yes, we, we would be happy to.
That's right.
That's, that's a condition stated in here as part of what we're recommending, as part of what's being recommended, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Didn't we pass that any new commercial stickers had to be electric? Or was that just for small?
For autoettes, commercial autoettes.
For autoettes? Oh, not, not all vehicles? Okay.
And I will state that once we move the general, and if we are allowed to replace that, we would like to replace it with either a hybrid or a full-electric vehicle that we already have full specs on.
We can discuss that at a later date.
Okay.
A question on the vehicle, you, were you guys already running tours in the vehicle?
We have not run any tours on the vehicle. We did a photo shoot, which we got a day pass for. No one paid for a tour on that vehicle. It was just a photo shoot.
And got all the permissions with the conservancy all ready to go.
Oh, correct, yeah, the conservancy gave us permission to run the vehicle.
And then the modifications that were made, have those already been approved by the D M V., and have you had a Department of Transportation approval as well?
Yes, all, all of our vehicles are registered with the D M V. as well.
And they were approved with the modifications made?
Correct, yes.
Okay. It's just, I mean, it's, I was looking at the original vehicle versus what's, what the vehicle is now.
Because now, yes, it is, everything is approved.
Yeah, the extension of that cab is a little worrisome with that much weight on the back end of it. I'm just wanting to make sure that that was all approved.
It is, correct.
Okay.
Do you have any comments, questions? Chief Allegria?
Something we need to think about, the mole reconstruction coming up. Where they park, it's not going to be able to be there, I don't think. There's going to be no room at the mole. And then we need to verify that there's been a D M V. certified inspection on this vehicle to make sure it's completely safe, and all the drivers need to have the correct passenger endorsement because it's over fifteen passengers.
I can confirm our driver does have his C D L., which he is allowed to drive this vehicle. I can get documentation for the D M V. approval for you. And for, as for the mole parking, that has been discussed. I discussed this with city manager here, and we are coming up with a plan as to where we can be relocated for this. Ideas have been where we store our van or our utility vehicle in the city property. Maybe that could be an option, if not somewhere where we have it right now.
I mean, the mole project here is going to create situations for not just yourself.
Sure, yeah, I understand.
It's for everybody.
I guess my only concern is congestion around the island, you know, not necessarily against you, because this is great, you know, and you're right, we do have a lot of visitors, so if you have the opportunity, I understand that part. It's just at one point, do we say is that too many large vehicles that are taking over, or, you know, our streets are so narrow as it is. We already have visitors on, a lot of visitors that don't use the sidewalks. We have our own congestion with the golf carts, and we're trying to get everybody to already be on foot as it is. So at what point do we say we have too many large vehicles of these kind? You know, that's my only concern.
The only good thing is this just goes in and out of town.
Correct.
But then, but then you're saying, Heather, that you're going to replace the general with something similar to this one?
We would like to, nothing larger than this. No vehicle will be larger than this vehicle.
That would be the one in town, the city and the Mount Ada one, but that's, that would still, when you replace.
But currently, the general is licensed to drive in town, so we have that, but we would like to like replace that eventually.
Right, I got you. So when you replace the general?
Correct.
Will you then increase the tour amounts? I mean, the times, or would you still keep it the same schedule as the general?
I cannot confirm nor deny that. I mean, we would always love to run more tours with the company if we, if we have the need to and the capacity to fill it, we would like to increase our tour count.
So I guess that conversation would be later, when you, when you come to us with your replacement vehicle?
Sure, I'll have, I'll keep that in mind, thank you.
So I'm just going to throw my two cents in. I see it as, right now, switching out one hideous vehicle that I hate seeing on the streets was something that's a little bit better. So as, it, it would all have to be about the general being gone when it states, and have that discussion as to what you would be able to replace that with.
All right.
But, yeah, the, the one thing that got me looking at and being in favor is, is that the general would go away.
Me, too.
Any further discussion?
I think just, I would be fine with moving forward with the recommendations made. In addition, Chief Allegria's recommendation regarding the, the proof of D M V. certification for the modifications, and then just the passenger endorsement for each driver. I believe all of your drivers already have that that are operating right now because the vehicles are the size they are.
Correct.
But, so that's, that would be my recommendation if I could make a motion to meet that, right?
I have one more question. If, when you guys are going into the mole, and as it always is, congest in the middle and the roundabout, what's the plan B. to pick up your guests? If you can't get in the middle to pick up?
When the construction begins?
Yeah.
That, like I mentioned, the city manager and I have discussed that, we're coming up with a plan B. as to where we can relocate our operations. I mean, there'll, there'll be something.
Once construction begins, the whole, everything's going to be changed down there with all the other transportation providers also, but in the mean, are you asking in the meantime currently?
Yeah, just now, I mean, there's barely any room in there.
Right now, I mean, the general is doing a pickup and drop-off in the same location, and part of the conditions and the requirements we have for this vehicle is that the driver cannot leave, has to stay with the vehicle in case. cannot leave, has to stay with the vehicle in case it has to be moved at any time because of congestion or access to the crane or anything else down there. So we're anticipating it'll work the same way it's currently working.
And do you guys come across problems when you are dropping off or picking up, where you can't go inside of the roundabout?
No, never.
Okay.
Because they just, they go, they actually pull off to the side. They don't, they're not in the roundabout. They're roundabout, yeah. They just, they just pull into it, and then they park over to the side over by the lockers.
I mean, it can be blocked sometimes.
You can just get a little crazy in there.
No further questions or comments?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the transportation permit for Island Enterprises Inc. to utilize a commercial vehicle permit to conduct tours in an oversized vehicle with stated conditions, including the added condition of confirmation of DMV approval with the modifications made. Yeah.
A second.
I'll second.
No further comments? Call for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. Does this secure that the General will be removed?
Yes, that's what the motion is for.
There is no weaseling out of this?
No, that the motion is for it to be removed no later than January 15th, 2025.
Okay.
And that's whether or not they get an additional vehicle.
Because it's been removed from the interior. The conservancy won't allow it now because of, I guess, road, just, you know, problems.
Well, that might be a question for Heather. If you're not allowed to use it in the interior, how are you going to use the General now?
How are we?
Yes, if you're not, if you're only using the General for the interior tours, and you can't go in the interior?
We don't use the General for the interior. The General's for the city tours.
They're doing the Mount Ada tour.
The Mount Ada tour and the General. Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. All right. Motion and a second, I believe. Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, Jocelyn?
Item number nine is a contract award for public sector personnel consultants for total compensation study, and this is a compensation study that we went out to bid for this summer. We would like to award it. Jocelyn?
Yeah, I don't have a presentation for you this evening, but as you guys know, the last study was done in 2015, and we received approval to go out to request for a proposal, and we received 18 proposals, which is fantastic. So of those 18, we invited the top five consultants to present to a panel of city staff. Of those five, four presented, and we are recommending to award a contract with public sector personnel consultants in an amount not to exceed $45,000. So their proposal is for $37,500. That's for a total compensation study of all classifications within the city of Avalon. And we're recommending to buffer that a little bit in case there's any additional work we want them to conduct for the city and keep them on retainer through the end of next calendar year.
Any questions or comments?
I'm just happy we're doing this. Thank you, guys. I think not only do the workers deserve it, but just trying to keep up with these living expenses, it's going to be great, so I appreciate it.
Is that a motion? Councilmember De La Rosa?
I make a motion to award a contract to public sector personal consultants to complete a total compensation study and provide all consultant services in an amount not to exceed $45,000, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and any related documents.
I'll second that. Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Item number 10.
Item number 10 is the update and ask for additional action on the Crescent Hillside stabilization contractor procurement in that project. Mr. Greenlaw?
It's nice to see you up here, Bob.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Council, Bob Greenlaw. Item 10 proposes additional funding to finalize the Crescent Hillside project. Since we're asking for additional funds, I wanted to share a complete update on the project, but do the full agenda on it. I had like 50 slides. I think that I'll put that off till the, finally, we're done with the project, which will be very shortly from now. So I think it, you'll find it very interesting when I share those slides with you. So I'm just going to go straight forward to the request so that we can get through this. So we budgeted $516,023 for the total project. That was what you approved in the budget. We received a proposal for time materials not to exceed $282,000, and council had previously delegated the authority for the CM to negotiate that contract, and so we went forward with a not-to-exceed amount of $300,000. So, and just to be aware that we had no solid proposals for a long time on this project, and we were struggling to find a contractor due to the limited access, the island logistics, and also, all the hillside contractors were full up on the mainland there with all of that storm damage of this last year. So we were real lucky to find this contractor. So what it gets down to is, once we got into the hillside, it became evident that the water and the amount of seepage that was coming out of the hillside that was causing this, as we executed further down, as we put all the parts and pieces together, the drainage issue was significant, and it had to be addressed because really, that's the root problem of this. If we don't address that water, even though that we put all the support for the walls there, we're still going to have slippage on the hillside. So that leads to additional time materials for the construction contract, additional geotechnical specialty inspectors that are out there assisting me to make sure that we're watching everything, that it's being installed correctly and documented. And then that's more lodging, and also more crane moves, because we've had, you know, four crane moves now, and we'll soon have a fifth. So the supplemental request is for an additional $358,977. That was for the total project, with $300,000 of that being needed for the construction contract and the balance going to those other items. So in summary, that really brings the total, total project to $875,000, not to exceed that, versus $516 that we initially had budgeted, plus some change. And the construction contract total is now at $600,000 versus the $300,000. So that's kind of the vitals for it. Is there any questions that you have of me? I will give a full update with pictures and all that when we get, when we get done with the project.
I'm sorry, and I might be missing something. So it was a state of emergency and all that, but did we get any money from the state for our emergency?
So we have asked FEMA even today. We've been pinging them. So we had a $300,000 large project, and that large project can vary, and right now, all they say is it's in review, okay? And of course, when you get to a large project with FEMA, it has all these different levels that it goes through, every aspect of it. Hopefully, we'll, we'll see some fun.
Something, okay, great. Comments or questions?
I think the challenge is that this has to be done. It can't not be done.
Oh, yeah. You can't stop now.
Yeah. I'm thankful that we've figured out and kind of pinpointed some of the areas of concern. I'm hoping that there's an ability to trace back what those areas of concern are being caused by eventually, and be able to see if there's funding in that source as well. But with that, I will make the finding, unless anyone has questions?
No, you're good.
Make the finding that emergency measures must continue to be implemented to protect from economic loss of both city property and the adjoining private property, as well as reduce the hazardous conditions from a landslide below the Crescent Avenue stairway, and authorize the city manager or his designate to negotiate additional work to repair the Crescent Avenue hillside stairway for not to exceed total of $600,000, and amend the fiscal year 2024-25 budget by increasing account 10550-6547, CIP project number 205002, by $358,977 for a total project sum of $875,000.
I'll second.
Okay, any further comments? Let's call for the vote.
All ayes.
And can I make one quick comment? The owner of the property above there at the stair was very happy with what we've done to shore up the hillside. She wanted to thank the city council and the city manager and Public Works for getting it done, so.
And the whole cost of the project is falling on the city of Avalon, though, correct?
Currently.
Apparently?
Currently.
Currently.
All righty. Okay, item 11.
Item 11, we are asking council to affirm the city manager's decision to terminate a permit to provide medical cannabis delivery business services to CJMH Group, Inc., DBA Catalina Connect. Authorize the entity and its individual proprietors to apply for a future City of Avalon medical cannabis delivery permit without prejudice, and authorize the city manager to refund an appeal connected to that business, and authorize staff to go out, submit the application process, and renew for the new, fulfilling the new permit. Devin?
Good evening, City Council. Devin Hart, management analyst. So for your consideration tonight, the city staff has those four recommendations for your consideration regarding the city's current medical cannabis delivery service permit. As you know, Chapter 5-20 of the Avalon municipal code establishes all of the local rules and regulations associated with medical cannabis delivery service businesses and other cannabis business activities. The code permits the issuance of one medical cannabis delivery business permit annually, but not just one permit, and then that permit is renewed annually. In December 2018, the city council adopted a resolution of intent toward its very first permit to CJMH Group, Inc. They were doing business as Catalina Connect. They were officially awarded their medical retailer non-storefront license by the State of California Bureau of Cannabis Control in mid-2019, and then shortly thereafter, they began operations. Unfortunately, in September of 2021, city staff became aware of a conflict with the two owners of CJMH Group, Inc., as well as an issue with the state franchise tax board. Through the regulations established in Chapter 5-20 of the Avalon municipal code, if there's an ownership conflict, there's no change in ownership permitted, so if there's an ownership conflict, or if, and, and/or if there's any issue with any other regulatory body, it gives the city the ability to revoke the license. Rather than revoke the license, the city chose to, at that time, suspend the license to give the permit holders the ability to cure the issues. We worked with both of the owners, met with them separately, and exchanged emails and phone calls trying to work through the issues. But although they were able to cure the issue with the state franchise tax board, it's become evident to city staff that over the 20 months that the program's been, had been suspended, that we weren't going to be able to cure the ownership issue. So, you know, for lack of a better term, there was no way to, you know, split the baby between the two owners because of the nature of our licensing structure. So the city decided to revoke the permit in May 25, on May 15, 2023. One of the owners, Carl Johnson, was able, filed a timely appeal. However, we were unable to determine if the appeal was filed by someone with, if Mr. Johnson had the authority to file the appeal. At the time, he was maybe a 40% owner. We couldn't ever get the correct documents to ensure that he was able to file an appeal on behalf of the corporate entity. And Mr. Johnson, or, and the city attorney can speak more to those details if you guys need more. In the end, it's been determined since we've been kind of in this limbo state with the license since 2021, it would be best for all parties to move forward by calling the permit revoked or non-renewed, just simply terminated, so that way we can open up the application period for new licensees. It's become evident that the, the current owners aren't going to reconcile, so this will give the owners the opportunity to pursue licenses without the others' involvement. If we were, there's no way to award the permit to either entity because, or restore the permit to either individual, because the nature of the operations has shifted significantly. The owners don't have access to the individual assets, so like the, the property that was used, the brick-and-mortar property for the cannabis business, I don't know if each entity has access to or anything like that. So rather than go through all those gritty details, we thought that it'd be best to just start, start freeing clear. In which case, I provided a quick timeline for everyone in terms of opening the application date. We just want to do some fine-tuning with the application and make sure it's exactly where we want it to be. And then also, you know, some staff have planned vacation, so after that time, we're going to open the application period later on this month, close it after a nice, long review, after a nice, long period, review the applications later on this year, and then hopefully give you guys the opportunity to adopt a resolution of intent to award a permit in, on December 3rd. Do you guys have any questions about the application promises or the permitting in general?
Well, well outlined. Would anybody like to speak on this agenda item?
My name is Carl Johnson, and I am the CEO of Catalina Connect. I am here to address the agenda item number 11, which concerns the potential revocation of my cannabis business permit. Proof of authority, I have an electronic format, I have in electronic format, and I can present a declaration of directors and officers form as proof of my authority to speak on behalf of Catalina Connect. My signature is also present on our lease agreement, state license documents, and applications, further demonstrating my official role and involvement in the company. Additionally, I am the sole individual who engaged in all daily operations throughout the entirety of my business's active period. The city has set up meetings with me, accepted my appeal and payment, and communicated directly with me regarding compliance issues. These actions clearly acknowledge my role and authority. It is contradictory and unjust for the city to now question my authority. My appeal was submitted timely in May of 2023, within the required 10 days, yet no hearing was scheduled within the stipulated 90 days. Procedural errors and due process. I have not been provided proper notice and the opportunity to address compliance issues, which is a violation of due process. The city's actions lack transparency and fairness, which is detrimental to the integrity of the process. As soon as I heard the potential compliance issues, I ceased operations on September 9th, 2021, three weeks before any notice was given by the city. This action was taken to ensure the integrity of the industry and the viability of our unique community. Despite my proactive measures, the city has failed to acknowledge that all cited violations occurred after I was prevented from performing my fiduciary duties facilitated by city staff and the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. State-level, the state authorities recognize my role and have put our license on hold, awaiting my response. This further validates my authority and involvement. However, the city is attempting to move forward with revoking my permit without giving me a fair chance to rectify any issues. Furthermore, city staff has not reached out to the state regulators for guidance, even though local approval is a precursor to license status. State authority supersedes local law, and their input would carry significant value and merit. Revoking the permit without a thorough review and due process has been and would continue to be detrimental to my livelihood and my business. Such a decision would be both unfair and harmful, especially considering my substantial personal investment and the efforts I have put into ensuring compliance and operational success. This decision also negatively impacts our customers and the community who rely on these Disclosure, I deeply, I'm deeply concerned that agenda item number 11, which spans 78 pages of tonight's agenda, includes proprietary and confidential information about my business. Disclosing this information publicly can cause significant harm to Catalina Connect. This includes corporate bylaws, financial agreements, regulatory filings, meeting minutes, and details of internal dis- and details of internal disputes. I request the city council to remove and redact any sensitive information from the public record immediately. Additional concern: financial loss. The revocation and public disclosure of proprietary information can lead to significant financial losses and damage to my business reputation. Community impact: my business provides valuable services to the community, and its closure adversely affects local customers who depend on us. I have always strived to maintain compliance with both state and local regulations. The city's failure to communicate and allow me to address any issues undermines my efforts and obligations to operate lawfully. The last communication I received regarding this issue was more than a year ago. The city manager admitted during a recent meeting that the city has been waiting for proper authority, despite every conversation acknowledging my role and authority. I urge the city council to defer the decision until all evidence is reviewed and due process is followed. I have already presented a detailed compliance plan with my appeal and show my commitment to adhering to all regulations. I am ready and willing to work with the city to resolve any outstanding issues promptly. Additionally, I do not wish for my appeal fee to be refunded. If that's the decision to be made, then the, if the decision is made to refund it instead of hearing my plea, I expect the refund to include all applicable interest that has accrued over the last 342 days beyond the stipulated 90-day window for scheduling the hearing. I would much rather exercise my 14th Amendment constitutional right and speak to those elected by the people who can make a final decision based on good faith and the original intent of the law, showing compassion for their fellow citizens and businesses. If the city proceeds with the revocation and continues to disclose proprietary information, I will have no choice but to pursue legal action. This includes seeking injunctive relief to prevent further harm to my business and holding the city accountable for violating due process and disclosing confidential information. Thank you for your attention. I am committed to working with the city to resolve any issues and ensure compliance.
Will, does the city attorney want to comment on anything?
Yeah, two issues. First, with respect to the fact that the permit has in fact expired. The permits are only for one year, and then unless they're renewed, they expire. So that permit, his permit, has not been renewed by the city. It's expired three years ago. Having said that, we still, to hear, hear his appeal, we let him file the appeal for it because there was an attempt to change ownership. There's actually a lawsuit on that. And during the last couple of years, I have repeatedly asked for proof that Mr. Johnson has corporate authority to file the appeal. That's what we've been waiting for.
Steve, your questions, Carl, have approached the bench again.
I have, we have not been provided proof that he had authority as a operating member of the company to file the appeal. We've received no proof of that, and therefore, the appeal, if heard, would, it would be our opinion that it should be dismissed because he's got no standing. He's got, he doesn't have the right to appeal because he's not the owner. He's not in operation control of the business.
Okay, I'm hearing that. And Carl, if you want to make another comment, come up to the, to the podium there, please.
That is not what the state says. You contact the state, they don't even talk to the other, they don't talk to the other guy. Look who's here tonight. You see the other guy here in the audience?
And I don't know what, with regard to what he just said, I don't know what all that means, so. What would constitute proof?
Proof would be that the corporation has actually authorized the appeal. There is no proof of that. I've asked for proof, I've asked for proof of minutes that the corporation authorized the appeal. We have no proof that the corporation authorized the appeal. The information we provided just Mr. Johnson is a minority, was or is, I don't know the correct status, was a minority participant in this corporation, and that as, and that the corporation itself has not authorized him to file the appeal. We've asked for that proof, we do not have it. Regardless, the ordinance provides that a permit is valid, is valid, is okay for one year, and it wasn't renewed, and so there are double grants. But what we've done, and we've said, if the appeal were to be heard and denied, under your municipal code, Mr. Johnson would be prohibited from reapplying when we go out to the market again.
Oh, really?
Okay, because if you revoked, that's it. And so what we've done is we've offered the opportunity to say, we will basically say your permit has expired, we will, we will deny the appeal, but you will still be given the right, when we go out to the market, to apply for another permit.
That law you're speaking of stipulates the revocation, which started over a year ago, and after two years, I qualify for the application process. So it's just a matter of a couple of months, I do qualify for the application process.
Well, if the appeal were denied tonight.
Why, why just because, because you guys decided to hear the appeal a whole year later? That's not my problem. I've been waiting.
So I think I'm a little confused in that it's, it's, I don't understand that the initial application was revoked, it just wasn't renewed, it wasn't replied for.
Let me clarify, they revoked my license two weeks after I was prevented from my fiduciary duty, and I would have not been able to, I was not able to complete any of those documents. Every single day that I was in charge, you guys had full cooperation from me. Every day that I was shut out is a different story and should be a whole separate topic.
Basically locked out by his partner, locked out of the business.
Who's the majority owner of the business? Okay.
Devin?
So I came up here with a point, and I lost it. So I just wanted, in terms of the revocation process, there's a number of reasons that we could, the non, the non-renewal element. I'm sorry, guys, I had a really great point, and I just lost it.
It was just, it was just in asking if the, I think you were responding to my question, maybe of, so every year, this is supposed to be a renewal process, and it was, yeah, is that what it was?
Yes. So, so as you see in the timeline that we provided, the license from the state was awarded in mid-2019. So it was one of those things that kind of got unfortunately lost in our COVID flood. At the time, I was the only staff member, and still am the only staff member that's involved in our cannabis permitting, and I was also out of the office on maternity leave. So getting back is when all the issues came, came to head. So during the time that the permit was in operations, city staff never had a chance to do our due diligence and double check that the operations were in compliance with our license or follow up with the renewal process. And that's why we allowed the permitee to keep operating through 2021 is because we were kind of recognizing that we weren't doing our due diligence and, and just kind of giving him the good faith, acting in good faith. But to speak back to Mr. Johnson's comments, there's no clear way for city staff to move forward with the municipal code, because there's no, the operation plan that he has moving forward is not going to be what the operation plan that the city council approved back to, back in 2018. And when there's any, any change, the requirement of the municipal code is for the city council to approve it. So that's, that's where we are fundamentally. The ownership's not the same, the brick and mortar facility won't be the same, we can't guarantee that the delivery vehicles are going to be the same. So in light of all of those complications, it's staff recommendation to move forward with the revocation or expiration of the permit.
Again, the whole purpose of the ordinance was when someone applies for a cannabis license, that we know who they are, we know what the business is, we know what they're going to do, we have specifics about that individual or that group, and that corporation has gone through the state to get the appropriate license. The municipal code says that this is, if there's an attempt to change ownership or changes ownership, that permit is revoked. Here, we had evidence that there was a attempt to change ownership, there's actually a, there was a lawsuit filed about that. So under the municipal code, the ordinance was, was revoked. And again, then when the appeal came, we just said, give us proof that you have the ability to appeal, and we do not have that proof.
Why? So you guys can make it public information, like the other 78 pages?
To be clear, the documents that are included in the staff report.
Are my appeal? That's supposed to be brought to the council, not the public?
The, every document that we bring to the council is part of the public record.
They're all, they're all submitted to the city. It's public record. I mean, it would be open to the public at any request.
And to clarify points about ownership and vehicles, I have time to amend my application for any vehicles, which is more regulated on the state level. And once again, you guys should defer to your state agencies because they do supersede this law here. You guys can allow the, your choice of operators, but most of the law, my metric track and trace, everything else that I comply with, my, the safety procedures of delivering and keeping it in a closed container, all that stuff is regulated by the state, not you guys. So I have time to amend things, and when a court, when a judge removes an officer from a company, I wouldn't consider that a change of ownership. I think that's just.
But has that happened, Carl? Has that happened? Have they removed anybody from the ownership?
It will happen.
Okay, however, okay.
And I could promise you this, the process you're going through right now is still going to take longer than me. I'm already halfway through my, my legal battle. So, but the process you guys are about to go on is going to be longer, and it's going to be more of a disservice to the community.
My understanding, though, is that if you were to, and hear me out for a little bit on this, I could be wrong, but if you were to allow us to do this process and you were to apply newly, then your current or previous business partner would not be able to interfere or interrupt with your.
I'm going through the legal process to make sure he's not involved. I'm going through the legal process to, to be not joined at the hip with him. And so I'm going through that process to actually do exactly that. And going through this process is basically you guys calling me insane. I'm not going to do the same thing and expect a different result.
Well, I personally don't think that that's what we're doing.
I think, you're expecting me to put more resources out that I don't have, and expect me to get in bed with somebody else and expect different results?
I have a question. Whether we said here, you can still have your permit under, and just amend the name, assuming we could do that? How is it going to be?
I would like to be heard at an appeal.
How, will it be any more, any less expensive than filling out the application that's on the back because you still have to find a place for the business, a vehicle? I don't see what the difference is.
I could go through all the court, I could go through all the legal jargon with you, but I don't think we have that time right now.
I mean, it seems like all the assets are gone.
What's that?
Seems like all the assets are gone.
No, they're not gone. A landlord just doesn't want to be sued by the other of us, and then once we have a judgment, then that's not an issue. So it's not, it doesn't say the same. When I can actually recoup assets that were taken from the company, and I can actually get my fair share of it back, I have.
I see, I understand now.
But starting all over is not really.
It's been three years since residents of Avalon have been able to enjoy or get their medicine.
September 9th, 2021.
Three years since the residents of Avalon have not been able to get their medicine. We are trying through this process to move forward to allow residents to get their medicine.
I think that's my only concern. It's not necessarily that I wouldn't want you to, because I see that you would have to start all over again, and yeah, that would not be great for you at all. I understand that part. It's just having to keep extending this, like how much longer do we have to extend it, you know, till we've come to a final resolution?
Tell his, his.
Right.
My situation.
It's been three years, so how much longer do we have to wait?
My situation is not to exceed 18 more months. Yours is going to take 18-plus months, because it takes at least nine months with the city and at least nine months with the state, and that's only if you're the squeaky wheel that goes up to the state every month and goes and talks to them when you're not supposed to even be in the building. See, everyone else waits like two years, just at least, and they're at the bottom of a stack. See.
How long did it take us from start to finish? Do you remember, Devin?
It did take about, it did take almost two years.
I incorporated CJMH Group without said business partner in 2016, the beginning of 2016. He joined in January of 2019. We opened our first day of business, December 5th of 2019. He wasn't even with me a full year, and I regret the decision every day.
And I appreciate Mr. Johnson's legal struggles, but again, a change in ownership, Section 5-20.070B, no person may transfer ownership or control of the medical cannabis delivery service business.
We're not transferring ownership, though. We're not transferring ownership. When somebody's removed from the company because, and they're not allowed to be an officer of a corporation of California anymore. When they, when that happens, that is not a change of ownership.
In this, in this, according to the city, it would be a change in ownership. So if he were able, able to win his legal battle, that would constitute a change of ownership, and that is not permitted by the municipal code.
It can just automatically fold over to him?
No, ma'am.
You're right back in this situation 18 months from now.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Really, if the court, if the court ruled that his partner was no longer a part of the corporation, that would be considered a change of ownership?
Yeah, because he's a.
And he was facing criminal charges?
Yeah, again, I don't know.
That's just, that's beyond.
Carl, hold on.
If the lawsuit, if he would prevail, and he was a minority owner going into the lawsuit, unless he prevails and now he's a majority owner, that's a change of ownership, because it's a change of control, change of ownership.
Scott, we had this conversation. There is no majority owner, because no one owns 51% of the company. So stop saying majority owner, please.
Devin, it's your estimate in the staff report that if we open the reapplication, and we've already gone through the application process once before, I think the whole process took two years, but the application process, we estimate that we'll be able to award a new vendor or Mr. Johnson in some other capacity, even on his own, by December 3rd.
That's correct. And it should be noted that then that applicant would have to go to the state licensing, the Bureau of Cannabis Control to get their license. Also, if it's council's direction, staff can expedite the permit or the application process. We just gave ourselves enough time to do a fair amount of due diligence.
Anybody else want to speak on this issue?
Please.
When's your next court date?
Next week. I have almost a court date every week. I'm over there all the time.
No, I guess, when is the trial date? The trial date for the lawsuit? When is the trial date?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
Well, Carl said it might take up to 18 months.
Yeah, it's, yeah. It's not on schedule. Let's just say that.
But so if what you're saying, even, even if you prevail in your suit, they're saying it would be a change of ownership, and it's not, it's not.
When a judge mandates that I can recover my lease, recover my assets and things like that, and he's been removed for unlawful things. How do you, you expect the ownership to remain the same when a judge removes somebody from a company and tells them they cannot be part of a corporation in California ever again?
Well, I'm sympathetic to that, but attorney over here is saying that it is a change in ownership.
Well, that is very, he's, he's just admitted that it would be a change of ownership.
Okay, so my question to you, Carl, is if you do indeed prevail, then you would get money from your old partner, is that it?
If I go through collections.
So it just seems to me that you, when you prevail, you will be in the same boat as you are right now, what we're trying to offer you, which is.
What are you trying to offer me? That I get, that I get another shot at it? And I get to be put in a.
You get to be. You get to be by yourself.
I get to be put in a hat with everybody else and go through the process again when I worked my ass off to get here and get a license? I have to go through that whole process again just because you don't want to admit that Carl Johnson knew his shit? And he knew his stuff, and he's the reason why Catalina Connect got the license. Catalina Connect, the entity, got the license, not Carl Johnson. But Catalina Connect got their license because Carl knew his stuff, not because of this other guy or anybody else. And so you guys are afraid to admit that. And you guys are afraid to say, pick an individual. And because of that, I have to go through the wringer again. I didn't, I don't count my chickens before they hatch. So even though people were telling me that I had the license before I had it, I never thought for one second that I had it until it was actually said that I had it. And I'm going to anticipate that same thing now, and I'm going to be going through the same dilemma. Is he...
Well, I know you know your shit.
I am the most qualified person to have the license, but I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to take that gamble again when...
It just seems to me like you're in a really legal-sticky situation here, you know? And I agree, I know you know your shit. So, you know, but I'm really sorry that this, you got in this with your partner. But we are where we are. I mean, I don't know how to resolve it with your partner. And it sounds like, I mean, it's been going on for three years. I don't know how much longer, you don't know how much longer that's going to go either, you know? So it seems like this would, it seems to me in your best interest because the city's going to refund your, you'll at least get your appeal money back.
I don't want my appeal money back. I want to be heard.
You want what?
I want to be heard. I've got a lot of evidence to show. I've got a lot to present at an appeal hearing, a lot more than I've said tonight.
Well, then where's the proof that the city attorney has been looking for? What is, why don't you have a document to prove that?
Why hasn't the city attorney reached out to the state, who actually acknowledges me as the owner and won't talk to Steve Burton?
Well, I don't know, but why didn't you reach out to the state and show Scott?
They recognized that he filed fraudulent statements of information, that he submitted documents, that they had a meeting of shareholders without the CEO presiding over the meeting. How is that a meeting of shareholders?
I don't know, but if you have documentation of that, that would really help.
I do. I have documentation of all of it. But I don't think I'm going to provide it in a public setting like this when 78 pages of my information is put out there just so the next person in line to fill out an application can get ahold of all my hard work.
Again, I have asked for documentation.
Yeah, I got it right here.
Then why didn't you present it when he asked for it? He's asked us a couple times.
I've presented him many forms of documentation. I provided you my stock certificate. What else does that have to say? Like, that's authority of the company.
I just want to make a comment here that I'm reading.
Why do I have to show a statement of information, something that is, that has been submitted fraudulently? And we all know it. The state knows it. The state calls it a hostile takeover.
And again, just, so the Department of Cannabis Control, the Bureau of Cannabis Control, they have a license lookup. So you can look up Catalina Connect right now and look at their license status. And looking at their license status, it shows expired. It additionally shows it's registered as a corporation with Carl Johnson, Linay Kobo, and Stephen Burton. So just, just again, to be clear about the facts of everything.
And their license expired July 23rd, 2022?
That's correct.
So even if you did it, you'd have to reapply and go through all those steps again?
No. If you contact the state, they have shelved. There's no designation for shelving the license. I have four years that it's shelved because they understand, they told me, "Carl, we know that your signature's on all the documents. You are the person in charge. You're the one we've talked to all these years, and we're not going to make a move on anything until we hear back from you." They said, "And you have four years to do so." So over the next four years from 2022, I still have to pay for every year of my license, but I'm not going to pay for something I don't know if I'm going to be using. But once I know I'm using it, I'll pay, I'm going to pay every penny of it.
Well, expired to me means expired, just like our thing has terminated. So I don't, it seems like you'd have to show proof that expired.
Since it's expired, I haven't operated. I stopped operating three weeks before the city asked me to stop operating. Because when in doubt, I wanted to stop it because I wanted this town to have cannabis for the long haul. I wasn't like my partner who was telling me, "Why did you close early without anybody telling us to close?" Just because he's worried about a profit.
Expired to me means dead, but...
What's that?
Expired to me means dead.
Expired is expired because I haven't paid a fee. But if you call them, it's shelved. It's still on the shelf, and I can go activate it tomorrow.
Counsel? Just correct attitude. How much was the appeal cost?
$500.
Oh, okay. All right.
I feel for Carl and his legal woes, and I feel for anyone who gets into business expecting something and finds that it becomes something different. I think most business owners have unfortunately gone through similar situations like that at times with partners involved. The challenge that I'm trying to find and trying to see a way around this is that because of the legality of the applications and more than just your name being on it, if the other people who were on that, even if they're not part of the company anymore, aren't willing to say that you are the person that is now in charge of the company, I don't see how, even whether it's now or whether it's when you get the results back from the legal disputes, that you wouldn't have to go through this process anyway, that it would be new ownership technically. And that's the part that I'm getting stuck on is that because of that stipulation that new or differing ownership be required to go through the application process again, whether it's now and we do this so that it saves you time in the ability to reapply. I know you're not wanting to. I get that. I appreciate that. But it may save you time and effort now versus waiting through the process legally and then still having to do the same thing even when that's done, even if you are the person found to be in the right, which I think you are, that that still leads to the point of different ownership. So it would still trigger you to have to apply newly for this anyway. But I don't know if you want to wait that long to have to do that.
I don't, I don't think it'll be as long as you think, but...
No, I know, and I wish, I wish we could say that's true, but I don't know how else to...
While I haven't heard from the city staff for a year, I've actually been doing things every month for the last year, and I've been making very good progress. And to answer the question about them, I'm here and they're not.
Right. No, I appreciate that.
And they don't, they're not answering any correspondence from state authorities, any notices, any calls from you guys, if you guys are trying to call them. I'm answering those calls. I'm answering that mail, and...
I think to Mary's point and your point, I think it's clear that you know the business you're doing. You have gone through what you need to go through to make this business work the way that it was supposed to. The challenge is that because of those changes, I don't, I don't know how we can get past, unless we were to change code, which we are not doing. This decision is coming to us as the code is. I don't know how else to avoid you having to go through a reapplication process, whether it's now or after the legal battles are settled.
Does it just say a change of ownership comes before the council again? It doesn't have to, it comes up for a whole new RFP? I don't think, I don't think that's...
It says it's a term for revocation.
Right.
Where's the word "may" in that one, Scott?
Than that even.
It may be revoked. Come on.
Okay, I mean, Carl, you indicated in your filing that you're a 40% shareholder, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That means there's 60% out there. Who is the 60%, who owns the 60%?
10% is a financial interest holder that has no vote.
Okay.
And the 50%?
And the other 50%?
The other 50% is my CFO, but we each only get, we get one vote in our company. And I get the tie-breaking vote as the CEO. That's how our voting works, and that's what our bylaws say.
So the license was originally, or the permit was originally granted to the entity, the legal entity of which Mr. Johnson acknowledges he's a 40% shareholder. So there is 60% out there. I think the city would be in the same position if the other shareholders came and asked for the same thing. We wouldn't be able to grant them the appeal either. I mean, but they're not here. I get it. But if, unless 60% banded together and took corporate action to authorize the appeal...
There's only two members and two votes. So if I vote one way and he votes the other way, I get the tie-breaking vote.
Again, I've asked for proof that there was a corporate action to authorize the appeal. I have not received it. I've asked it for over a year. What we're trying to do through this process is allow medicine to be delivered for residents of Avalon as quickly as possible, which means hopefully by the end of this year, Mr. Johnson or someone else has a medical cannabis delivery permit. The quickest way to do it, to get people their medicine, under the code.
Two of the biggest things I see, Carl, is the change of ownership and the expired Avalon permit. I don't think that city attorney is going to budge on the change of ownership. So even if the other people were here, like city manager just said, if they won on some, on their court thing, they still would have to reapply because it would be a change of ownership for them as well. So that's where I think your big problem, your major problem is, right there. And I can't change that.
So it's change of, it's more important, a change of ownership is so crucial, even in the sense when one's not acting in good faith or having the best interests of our community at heart. Really? And a judge determines that. And you're going to say, like, to me, to me, a change of ownership is an at-will decision. And going to a judge and having a judge make an order is not, is not at-will.
Nobody's giving up the ownership, so that's why you have to have a judge.
He wants to do it the hard way. I'm playing ball.
So if you have a court date and the other guy doesn't show up, you win by default?
He never shows up. He has his legal counsel.
Well, then why has this been going on for three years?
Hmm?
Then how come it's going on so long? If he's, if he's not showing up, doesn't, don't you win by default?
He has legal counsel to show up for him.
His attorney shows up. That's what he just said.
Yeah, okay. Well, one of the things he, that, this is going back, but he was talking about redacting things in this packet. Is that what you said?
Please.
Is there anything that we can redact?
I don't, I don't know what in this record. I mean, if Mr. Johnson wants, first of all, it's already published. Second of all, as I'm looking through this, I do not see any document that is not a public document. Everything is either filed with the city as part of the application or is a state document. So I don't know what in fact he's talking about. There is a business plan that was affiliated with his permit that...
And we saw that back in 2000. Yeah, exactly. So there's nothing here that, okay. All right. Account, Bill?
I just want to make one statement. This is not the council that approved his original license. So it's a fresh set of eyes looking at what's going on. And it's just going to go back and forth. So I think we need to make a decision because there's, nothing's going to change. Ownership's not going to change in the next 20 minutes. And the way our ordinance is written, he is in violation of it. And so I would make the motion to affirm the city manager's decision...
I'm in violation of what?
To terminate a...
Excuse me, hold on. I've ceased operation. I haven't violated anything. You guys keep saying I've violated. I haven't paid a fee, but if you call the state, I just, I pay it, and I'm acting good standing. That doesn't mean...
Violated, I think.
I don't like the word violate when I closed three weeks before. You guys even gave me notice.
If I can have just one more, just note. On the state license, it says, "After 30 days of expiration, you will not be able to renew your license and are required to reapply for a new license." So that's just another point of fact.
That's with what?
On the state licensing website, it says, "After 30 days from expiration, you will not be able to renew your license and are required to reapply for a new license."
That's, that's general, that's general...
It's on the state of California Bureau of Cannabis Control.
I'll give you a contact at the BCC, and they'll tell you that...
I'm just reporting what's on the, what's on the website.
Yeah, that's general information.
And I won't use the word violation, but we are where we are. And so once again, I will say, affirm the city manager's decision to terminate a permit to provide medical cannabis delivery business services from CJMH Group, Inc., doing business as Catalina Connect; two, authorize the entity CJMH Group, Inc. and/or owner Stephen Burton or Carl Johnson to apply for a future City of Avalon Medical Cannabis Delivery Business Permit without prejudice; three, authorize the city manager to refund an appeal fee submitted on behalf of Carl Johnson regarding the revocation of the CJMH Group, Inc.'s permit; four, authorize city staff to open the application process for a new medical cannabis delivery business permit holder.
Is there a second?
One second.
Further comments before we have the vote?
Yeah, I hope you guys can identify the difference between someone suing you and someone applying for a new license because the person suing you is just trying to recover costs.
Over the vote.
Unanimous. No?
All right.
All ayes.
I wasted my time. Thank you, guys.
Item number 12.
So item number 12 is a request for an extension of the moratorium on the issuance of transient rental licenses for transient rental use to new applicants. And briefly, if I can just address a little bit of the history of the goddess here. On August 1st of last year, 2023, city council voted to establish a moratorium on the issuance of new TRL, transient rental licenses filed prior, that were not filed prior to August 1st, 2023, for a 45-day period. On September 15th, council again extended that moratorium for an additional 10 months and 15 days, acknowledging that the additional time was needed to further determine the level of impact on the City of Avalon of TRLs and short-term rentals. Since that time, the city has conducted the following activities: a stakeholder meeting on September 22nd last year, another stakeholder meeting on September 30th last year. We received an extensive list of comments during those meetings, and we also received a number of emails, both during, before, and after those meetings, providing great insight and suggestions for regulations. As it turns out, the regulations were nowhere near the biggest impact and impasse we were encountering. I would add that from October 1st to December 1st of last year, we did, conducted a survey and also compiled that information. What we found, though, however, is going back and looking at the city records, it was very difficult to hone in and identify each and every property in the city that had either a conditional use permit or a TRL attached to it because we worked our way back to the early 90s, thinking that was the start, and then we kept going backwards because we would see references to addresses and properties. And we ultimately had to go back all the way to 1980, reviewing each planning commission minutes and agenda items, some things that were held over, some things that weren't acted on. It became quite cumbersome, well over 400 separate meetings that had to be reviewed. So what we found was that these records and review of them was crucial to us having a comprehensive list of every property that has the ability to have a short-term rental on it in the city. Without that information, again, like I said, the regulations, I'm confident we can get there. I think we have a consensus, a basic consensus of what makes sense for the city as far as the regulations on the existing ones. But it's a critical issue in the city. I understand that. It's a critical issue of whether or not we're going to put a cap on these. And without knowing the exact number, we can't come up with a cap. We are, we have compiled at this point a list out of planning. We have to cross-reference that list with finance department. And then at that point in time, we'll be able to start having those discussions, both with planning... that point in time, we'll be able to start having those discussions, both with planning commission, the public, and then ultimately with council. So as more analysis at this time is needed, we're requesting an extension of the moratorium to allow us to further explore those issues, uh, as they relate to the overall public health, safety, and welfare of the city, and their impact on affordable long-term housing in the city. Um, and we understand revenues are obviously part of this. So again, we would ask council to extend, um, the moratorium as it currently exists to a date not beyond July 30th, 2025, and because this is, uh, the extension of the moratorium, it requires a four-fifth vote of council. Any questions?
I have a question I mentioned to the, to both of the gentlemen sitting to the left about the hardship case.
Yeah, so the hardship case is in there, given, um, the city's prior litigation experience with moratorium ordinances, um, specifically related to golf carts, uh, we inserted a hardship provision in there, and, uh, during that litigation, that, that provision gave the court and everyone great comfort that the ordinance was valid, because it did allow for very, very rare hardship cases to be relieved of that. And so that's why we have, um, we've put it in this ordinance, um, to, to save this ordinance from any legal challenge. So far, we have not gotten that challenge, nor have we, uh, had any appeals for hardship.
But you can give the example, okay. So I buy a $2 million place, and I go, oh damn, I can't afford it. I need a CUP. That's not going to happen.
That's not a hardship. A hardship is where you're gonna be without shelter, food, because, you know, that, that you need somehow to use a, a temporary occupancy permit to supplement, trans, your income and part of your, uh, residence, so that you can pay, um, for your food and shelter.
That'll just really have to be...
And, and it's a case-by-case basis. We have to, to look at all the facts, and that's the planning commission is charged with doing that, subject to, as everything, an appeal to the city council. And I would just add, since August 1st of last year, we've had, I would guess, under 10, maybe 10 or less, um, short-term rental applications filed. We're creating a waiting list. So it, it has not been the overwhelming, uh, volume that I originally anticipated. Um, not to say that those 10 aren't impacted by this, I'm sure they are greatly, and I understand that, but, um, it, it's a much smaller number than what we originally thought.
And the only other comment I'm, on the certification, Denise Raddie's name is in there, so I might want to change that on the last page.
My bad.
Well, um, is there anybody who'd like to make comment from the audience? From the public?
Sandra Putna, 110 Maiden Lane. Um, you know, this issue, it, it, I think it could have been addressed more aggressively during this past moratorium, because the planning commission actually did not have a couple of meetings for lack of anything to talk about.
Right.
And so now with the newly revised, and I'm hoping if you use the planning commission to the extent that it can be used, which, which it hasn't been for a long time. So with this new commission, I really hope that that gets done. But I think you need to realize also that this, the, the, well, the CUPs are now the, or the, the licenses, that subsidiary to the whole housing thing, which you, you can go back and look at if you don't choose to, but, you know, we used to have half a year at best of, of employment, and everything shut down. Businesses shut down. We didn't have cruise ships, but you, everybody went and filed for unemployment the day after, uh, day after Labor Day. But that goes back that far and even farther. But if you don't see this, housing is such an issue, and the lack of, and to not put this in as something under that, this is related to that. But to tie it to that, I just don't think it, it ever got enough, um, attention as being as large a prob, this is part of the larger problem of housing, every, oh, we don't have housing, we don't have housing, but who's, what, what are we doing about it?
Right, no.
So I'm hoping that you see that you've got to tie it in together, and that this is, this is an issue. But the other thing is, when I was on the commission, I voted for a lot of CUPs and that, and then the licenses, because they met the city's standards. And I was a commissioner for the city. So I voted for them, because if they could tick off all the boxes, et cetera. But that hasn't been revised. You know, you had to, I just hope that maybe now you can look at that more and put it into, uh, you know, to, to check that out, you know, to, to change it, because there were, there were times that, I mean, if it met what was existing, I felt, you know, you had to vote for it, or you, it had to be approved, because it, it met all the things. And, but especially, you know, just to recognize that this is a piece of a larger problem, and housing is one of the biggest, you know, all these other things that come up and go away, housing is the big problem. And because I've been here forever, I can see it.
And you haven't seen it.
And I, I, you know, you don't have to go back and look at the history, but sometimes if you go back and see how things changed, we used to be at best a six-month season. Now it's a 12-month season, even without the, even without the cruise ships, we're 12 months, we used to have two boats a day, period. Maybe three. But so, you know, I hope that it can be addressed, that you can see that, that there's more to it, but this is, this is, to me, a small part of the bigger issue. That's all.
I agree, yeah, we, I think everybody up here agrees with you. I'm Alan Sandy, that's for sure.
So planning commission just goes through the checkmarks, and if it's good, they're gonna do it regardless, like housing stock isn't into consideration?
No, it, well, it's... That's how it was, I'm sorry. Right. We're, that's how it was. That's, this is all part of this. We're, we're establishing regulations to control this.
Yes. Hello.
Hi, good evening, Kate Ruddin. First of all, I want to thank you for approving the moratorium in the first place. Obviously, it was a long and arduous conversation. It caused a lot of conflict within the community. But I think at the end of the day, hundreds and thousands of cities across the world are dealing with this issue, specifically as it pertains to community nuisance and lack of housing, um, that's causing this issue. So the good news is, you're not alone. The bad news is, it's something that needs to be dealt with. So I do think that extending the moratorium will certainly help. I don't think it's appropriate to attack citizens for looking for decent and affordable housing. I don't think it's appropriate to attack citizens looking for a clean and safe community. I don't think it's appropriate to attack citizens who want to protect our natural resources. So I think we all need to commit to, there's a problem, we need to fix it, versus, there is no problem. It's the same as it was 40 years ago. Uh, Amanda did a meeting of the planning commission, there were 288 active vacation rentals. The year she conducted a subsequent review, there were 383. So there definitely is an increase in vacation rentals. Do you cap it? A lot of cities are doing that. Do you ban it? I don't think banning is the right option, because we need the revenue. But I also think it's imperative that the city get every single dime it's owed in TOT. I think right now we need to go after people who are illegally operating. How you go about that, I don't know, but enforcement in all of these hundreds and thousands of cities is the biggest issue. How do we enforce? How do we get our money? And how do we hold people accountable? Because I'm really tired of making a call at 2:00 in the morning and getting bitched at, because I'm the bad person. Not right. We live here, we need to live in a safe environment. Thank you for your time, thank you for your courage.
Very much. Any other comments? Okay, council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve by four fifths council vote an ordinance extending the moratorium on the issuance of transient rental licenses for transient rental use to new applicants, um, to July 30th, 2025.
I'll second it.
I'll second it. Call, any further comments? Call for the vote.
Don't keep forgetting not to hear my name.
All ayes.
I know. I like the old way better, I think. All right, there's, all right. Meeting's adjourned.